But the effort had its share of skeptics.
To me, it seemed like too big a test. Fixing this sidewalk the way it was before, it was very slippery and I haven't known one person who was hurt. She's an old lady and she ended up in a convalescent home.
Works USA, a nonprofit aimed at creating safer, healthier, and affordable housing communities in Los Angeles, was instrumental in obtaining the city's attention and funding from the Bureau of Street Services to fix the section of road that residents nicknamed "The Hole."
It's called, or has been called, "The Hole," H-O-L-E. So we came along, Works, and along with the council office, we've put both a W in front of "The Hole" as well as a Y to make it holy. And so we're excited because this strip here represents years of hard work.
Years of persistence and $98,000 later, residents, young and old, celebrate something others might take for granted: a sidewalk where neighbors can safely greet neighbors or take a walk without fear of getting hurt.
After an extensive two-year makeover, Echo Park Lake reopened to residents in grand style. This story and more in City Beat.
13th District Councilmember and mayor-elect Eric Garcetti, along with 4th District Councilman Tom LaBange, led a ribbon-cutting recently to mark the grand reopening of Echo Park Lake.
It doesn't matter where you come from in the city, it matters where you want to go to.
We have cleaned up the lake, purified the water, fixed the edges of it, put in 153 new trees, new playground equipment, we have a new park for Echo Park.
The lake was originally built in the 1860s as a reservoir for drinking water, but today it serves as a detention basin in the city's storm drain system. The lake has now been drained and cleaned. Other improvements include new landscaping, wetland areas, and a walking path. 3rd District Councilmember Dennis Zine recently broke ground in Tarzana on the Ventana, a new 112,000-square-foot medical office and retail complex. The new construction helps meet an increasing demand in the area for a medical office and includes a cancer center. The Los Angeles Fire Department teamed up with LA Laker Pau Gasol to acknowledge a group of 4th grade students on their completion of the Spring 2013 Junior Fire Inspector Program.
What we want to do is reach these families in a way that's somewhat revolutionary. We're going through their children.
The Junior First Inspector Program, offered in cooperation with the nonprofit MySafe LA, is designed to teach families in at-risk areas and provide them with fire safety information they might not otherwise receive. New technology at metro stations is making it more convenient for Angelenos and tourists to avoid driving and instead take public transportation. Cindy San Luis takes us to Union Station with more.
Where's my card, everybody?
Metro rail users must now have a tap card to enter stations with the recent gate-latching installation at the metro red and purple lines at Union Station in downtown.
One, two, three, enter. There you go.
63% of the MetroLink riders who travel throughout Union Station will now be able to use the new tap-enabled tickets to access the metro system at no additional cost.
This technology, phasing into most metro rail stations during the next six months, ensures riders will be able to access not only the metro rail, but also MetroLink trains, MTA buses, and municipal bus operators, creating a seamless system in a county of 10 million people with 88 cities and 1.5 million residents in unincorporated areas. Andy Janicki uses a metro daily and likes the new card.
It's a huge improvement from where we've been.
Tap is your ticket. Patrons simply tap their fare card and the gates un latch for easy access.
It's great for transparency, great for, you know, easeability. And now we're gonna have a system where you use, where you use one card and you go all over, just add money to it.
Metro and its transit partners have been rolling out tap for several years, but with MetroLink, LA DOT, and other carriers now fully integrated, the gates at metro rail stations now can be latched, just as they are in most major cities around the world. Officials say that action will make metro rail stations more secure and should reduce fare evasion.
Today, we mark the day where everybody bears their fair share of the financial responsibility. It will raise somewhere between $7 and $10 million annually minimally.
It's a win-win for everyone involved.
They don't have to dig around and find a bunch of change, and it's safer. You can just tap it and go.
From Union Station, I'm Cindy San Luis for LA This Week.
Tap cards can be purchased at metro rail stations and at 500 stores across LA County. You can also order them online at tap2go.net. The city of LA is taking steps to reduce its carbon emissions. Yana K explains how small changes are making a big impact.
Driving down the street, you may not notice them, but they're there. They're newly installed, energy-efficient LED streetlights that officials say are benefiting you in more ways than one.
When you think about it, we have an opportunity to save money, improve public safety, and make the city brighter in so many ways. I mean, it's a win-win.
Los Angeles city leaders officially announced the completion of the LED Street Lighting Energy Efficiency Program, made possible by a collaboration between the Bureau of Street Lighting, LADWP, and the Clinton Climate Initiative.
This is one of a number of game-changing initiatives that we've been a part of over the last eight years.
Out of the 200,000 street lamps in Los Angeles, more than 140,000 of them have been converted to LEDs, like these ones here on Grand Avenue in downtown. That means taxpayers save more than $7 million a year in energy costs. Officials say the amount of LEDs installed makes Los Angeles one of the top global cities in reducing its carbon imprint. Some of the locations where the new LEDs have been installed include Venice Beach, the Sepulveda Tunnel under LAX, and the Sixth Street Bridge.
We're here this morning to salute the work that they did for doing very good work in conserving energy and making a difference for the safeties of our community.
This is a picture of Los Angeles in 2002 before LEDs. Pan down and you can see the same photo in 2012 after the LEDs were installed. The glow is gone and the amount of energy being used is considerably less. Officials hope the new LEDs will continue to shine a bright light on the energy needs of LA. I'm Yana K for LA This Week.
City officials are not done yet. They're getting ready to convert about 70,000 light fixtures across Los Angeles to LEDs. Ongoing budget challenges over the past several years brought cuts to the Department of Recreation and Parks, but as Cindy San Luis reports, local efforts with the help of Councilmember Jan Perry kept one South LA park open.
Open, close, hide your thumbs, close, open, close.
These South Los Angeles girls who take classes at Trinity Park are ballerinas in the making.
They're very graceful, they're very elegant, and their teacher is exceedingly talented.
But the fact is that without grassroots efforts, practicing first position and relevés wouldn't have even been possible. Trinity Park, located in one of the most densely populated neighborhoods in the city, had been consistently threatened with closures due to budget cuts. And in 2012, it lost its funding for programs.
There's not a lot of outlet for kids around in this community. A lot of the parks aren't even open for a very long time.
In response, Trinity Mothers for Action was created with the goal of re-establishing program funding and rejuvenating the park. Councilwoman Jan Perry was happy to help get funding restored for the park and get the girls back to doing their plies.
The young ladies of this community have the opportunity to learn ballet, just like any other young lady would have in any part of the city.
We do passes and cruises.
Now we have five classes that I teach a week. We're gonna be adding more classes and hopefully I can outreach more all over the community as well.
Whether these girls become professional dancers or not, they have a space to create, build self-confidence, and have fun. I'm Cindy San Luis for LA This Week.
Aside from ballet, fitness, jazz, and zumba classes are also available at Trinity Park. Across the city, another park is undergoing an upgrade. Ellen Chang reports from Woodland Hills.
The city's Department of Recreation and Parks yet again lives up to its name as it prepares to build a new recreation center where an old one stands. After the pledge of allegiance and a song led by the students of the Woodland Hills preschool program...
Sing a song about the flag and us trying to reach you.
Officials unveiled a model of what the future Woodland Hills Recreation Center will look like in just a few years.
When we look at the little children, they're gonna benefit from this years to come. And we're gonna benefit as we play cards in the park and have a little barbecues in the park, but it's gonna be for all, it's gonna be for the community. That's what I like so much about, to add to the flavor of the community.
With the help of the Department of Public Works's Bureau of Engineering and Councilman Dennis Zine's office, residents of Woodland Hills will be able to enjoy a new and improved community gathering place. The new rec center will involve the demolition of the existing pool and bathhouse and the construction of a new pool and bathhouse.
New 6,800-square-foot pool, 90 by 75. That pool's gonna be taken out, this entire concrete area's gonna be taken out, these buildings are gonna be demolished.
The demolition of the two existing structures means parkgoers and staff members will have a gymnasium, multipurpose rooms, office, kitchen, restrooms, and the addition of a new 5,000-square-foot playground. The existing rec center will be shut down to allow for construction.
I've been coming here since I've been approximately three years old and played in the basketball courts. It's very exciting to see bringing up values in the area, 100%. We're getting a lot of people moving from the west side that are very excited about the features that Woodland Hills has to offer to us.
The new Woodland Hills Rec Center Pool and Bath House project consists of three phases, expected to be completed in July of 2016 and under the $13 million budget.
The new Woodland Hills Recreation Center Pool and Bath House project consists of three phases. It's expected to be completed by July of 2016. This week in Things to Do: International Flavor at California Plaza, an adventure in art on the metro, and a sing-along at the Ford Amphitheater. On June 28th, Grand Performances at the California Plaza features two recipients of artist fellowships with the City of Los Angeles Department of Cultural Affairs. Composer and jazz violinist Michael White, who's described as a living legend, will be premiering Orbit, commissioned by the department. Also featured this evening is Bangalore-born choreographer dancer Malathi Ayengar. The performances begin at 8:00 PM and admission is free. For more information, visit the Grand Performances website at www.grandperformances.org. On Saturday, June 29th, you can take part in an LA Metro art adventure with City Race. Teams of two to four players solve fun and challenging clues during a three-hour hunt through LA's diverse neighborhoods. The City Race features the public art of the LA Metro. Admission to this experience is $40. The adventure begins at 10:00 AM in Pershing Square and participants will be required to purchase an LA Metro Day Pass for the event. For more information, visit racelA.com. Finally, travel to the Ford Amphitheater to experience the sights and sounds of Filipino music and culture with All Together Now. It features the Philippine Madrigal singers, two-time winners of the European Grand Prix. They'll join other noted Filipino artists to perform a variety of Filipino and American pop songs, original compositions, and standard choral music. The performance starts at 7:00 PM, but the grounds of the four will actually open at 5:00 for picnicking. For more information and ticket prices, visit fordtheaters.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. Community members in Pico Union are planning to spend more time outdoors this summer thanks to upgrades at a local park. Yana K has more.
Round and round they go, and where they stop, nobody knows. It's some summertime fun for these kids as they enjoy the new playground at the Toblerone Recreation Center in Pico Union. The playground is part of several upgrades at the center, and parents are happy to see the improvements.
Oh, I love this park. This is like my second home. Every time that I don't wanna be at home, I just come here and bring my kids. My kids love this place.
Councilmember Ed Reyes was on hand to open the new park, which now includes exercise equipment and areas for both younger and older kids. Reyes says about 20,000 young kids live near the park, so it will hopefully make a big impact on their overall health by keeping them active.
There is a trend of obesity, diabetes, and our young kids, they don't have access to this type of facility, but today, we made a difference.
The half a million dollar project is among the first of 40 other parks and trails that are planned throughout Los Angeles to address childhood obesity. I'm Yana K for LA This Week.
The park upgrades are made possible through a partnership between Councilmember Reyes, the Department of Recreation and Parks, the Los Angeles Neighborhood Initiative, and the child advocacy organization First Five LA. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Anita Bennett. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Good morning. I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, June 28th. The council meets three days a week, 10:00 a.m., on, again, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. If you would like to speak before the council, there should be cards in the back of the chambers that you can fill out. Or if you just want to see the council in work, you're welcome. And today is a pretty big day, so again, we welcome all of you to your Los Angeles City Hall. We do not have a quorum as of yet, but we will be starting shortly. I do want to take a moment, if I might, members. In fact, I think we do have a quorum. Mr. Parks is here, so we'll get started directly. I would like to introduce to you a very, very dear friend of mine, individual that some of you served with. He was my right-hand man when I was Speaker of the House. If you could please join me in welcoming the President Pro Tem of the Senate, Senator Darryl Steinberg from Sacramento. You know what, Darryl? We rarely speak from here. We rarely let a visiting dignitary speak, but I think, as President, it's a personal privilege here, I'm going to let you come over and say a few words to the crowd.
Thank you very much, President Wesson, my friend Herb. It is an honor to just have a moment, especially today, to be able to say thank you to the Los Angeles City Council, to the city of Los Angeles, to say hello to some of my former colleagues here, especially today because this is, I know, the day of transition. And I just wanted to personally thank those who are leaving the council for their service, to congratulate the new members, to congratulate Mayor-elect Garcetti, and to thank Herb and the city council for being full partners with the state of California in beginning to realize better times, better budgets, fewer cuts, more investment, more working with young people, more opportunity. What a wonderful part of democracy when elections happen, change occurs, and we begin anew. And I look forward to working with you, Mr. President, and your entire council. Thank you so much for having me.
Thanks, man. Thank you. That was very nice.
Thank you, President Pro Tem. From one president to another, now I'd like to turn the floor over to my dear friend, our dear friend, Richard Alacon.
Good morning. I'd like to ask the San Fernando High School baseball team to step forward. Having played baseball in the San Fernando Valley until I was 27 years old, I have a great appreciation for baseball and all that comes from it. And I'm very proud of the San Fernando High School team. They are city champions once again, and this is their second championship in three seasons. And on June 1st, 2013, the San Fernando Tigers beat Cleveland High School, another good high school in the San Fernando Valley, in a 2-1 nail-biter game at Dodger Stadium. They came into the game as the number-one seed, having a regular-season record of 33 and 3. The most valuable player of the game was San Fernando High School Roberto Ramos, who is...he's not here, he's visiting Mexico, but please, all of you, come forward. Squeeze in back here, so you can get on camera there. There you go. Roberto Ramos, I wanted to meet him. He's 6'5", 250-pound first baseman who went 3-for-3 and drove in both of the two runs. As the Daily News wrote, "With the score tied 1-1 in the bottom of the sixth, Ramos singled to left to drive in Jose Arros for the go-ahead run." Ramos, a senior Birmingham transfer, totaled five hits and four RBIs over the final two games, finishing with a .429 average, 11 home runs, and 43 RBIs, all with a wood bat. Also deserving recognition was the pitcher, Armando Esparza. Is Armando here? Where's Armando? Hey, Armando, who was 8-1 and threw a 4-hitter, holding Cleveland to just one single in the final six and 2/3-plus innings while striking out eight and outperforming Cleveland's Jack Hartman, who is considered one of California's top left-handers. As expected, it was a tight, low-scoring game, but the difference was, San Fernando took advantage of key opportunities. We want to congratulate the entire team, the coaches and parents, and if I could, I'd like to ask head coach Armando Gomez to come forward and be recognized.
Thank you.
Nice ring.
Thanks. I just want to say a few words. I want to thank the councilmen for inviting us here, and Mayor-elect Garcetti, and all the whole council in the city of Los Angeles. It's been a fun ride with the kids. The last two of the three years, we've won the city title. We're doing some good things. We're sending guys to the next level, to the university level. We have one kid who's 23 and 22 and 3, and the last two years on the mound, that's Alonso Garcia, who's also a straight-A student, so we're respecting big things from him. And I want to introduce Alonso to come up here and say a couple of words from the team. Thank you again for having us.
Let's give him a round of applause.
I'm Alonso Garcia, and I just want to thank you guys for having us here. It's an honor to be here. Coming from a small community, we're not really used to this kind of thing, so I just want to thank you guys for having here. We take great pride in this baseball program. We've worked hard our year, and we set our goals, and we came through, and this is what we wanted. So, thank you.
Where are you going to school?
I still haven't decided yet.
Hey, I've got to show you this ring. This is actually from last year, or two years ago, I guess. But this is real bling-bling, folks. I think George Lopez bought these rings, and he's agreed to buy them again, so I don't know, your left arm is going to be much longer than your right arm, but that's impressive. And of course, George Lopez went to San Fernando High, played on the baseball team, and is very proud of these guys. So, I want to commend the team, and especially the coaches, for the tremendous work that they do. It's hard to coach a team, let alone get all the way to the championship, so I want to recognize, of course, Armando Gomez, the assistant coaches, Ruben Haragui, Jordan Placencia, Jess Moreno, Ray Figueroa, Aaron Figueroa, Justin Lawrence, who's the Bat Boy, I like that one, and Dan Bellard, we can't forget the announcer. All these people make a team work, of course, the parents, the athletic director is Jeremy Lawrence...I'm sorry, Anthony Chavez? Anthony Chavez is the athletic director. The assistant principal in charge of athletics is Jeremy Lawrence, assistant principal Henry Fries, and of course, the school principal, Ken Lee. I forgot the trainer, who probably kept these guys in shape, and that's Pedro Montero. And I wish I could mention every member of the team. In fact, I will. Adonis Rodriguez, Jose Arros, Julio Arias, Jonathan Silva, Miguel Casaneda, Ariel Torres, Antonio Martinez, Joseph Mir, Alex Cuellar, Eddie Mendez, Daniel Cuellar, Willie Casianos, Rafael Salcedo, Omar Martinez, Armando Esparza, Roberto Ramos, Anthony Robles, Oscar Garcia, Carlos Robles, Alonso Garcia, Steven Viatana, Gustavo Valdivia, Carlos Garcia, Javier Aguilar, Salvador Veloz, Jesús Quesada, and Justin Lawrence. We want to congratulate the San Fernando High School Championship 2013 baseball team for the city of Los Angeles. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. Labange.
All the time you've been a councilman, a state senator, a settler, and you always did for youth sports. You all started on a playground, probably L.A. City Parks, Little League, and you then got in school, got great coaching. San Fernando Tigers can't be beat. They beat Marshall 8-2 in the semis. But anyway, I'm proud of you all, next level, good job, coaches, and way to stay eligible. Go Tigers!
Thank you.
All right, with that, I have certificates of recognition for all the players and the coaches, and want to, again, commend San Fernando Tigers for a tremendous victory. My grandfather was a janitor in the early '50s, late '40s, at San Fernando High, and he lost his job because he was forced to get his citizenship, and he refused to do so. And so, my mother was also a student at the old, what is the middle school now? That used to be San Fernando High. I was a teacher there, so we have a long history with San Fernando High, and congratulate you, except for the times when I went to Poly High and Anthony Davis cleaned our clock. So, with that, congratulations to all of you.
Thank you.
Let's give him a round of applause.
I was trying to stop, I said even...
Okay, as Mr. Alacon and his baseball champions exit the chambers, Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Alacon Busciano, Engler Garcetti, Wizard Cracorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Zine, Weston, 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of minutes.
Perry moves, Parks seconds, next.
Commensurate resolutions for approval.
Zine moves, Alacon seconds, next.
Mr. President, would you like to run through the agenda?
Yes, I would.
Beginning, there is a request to continue items 1A and 19A to July 26, and items 2 and 3 to July 3.
Without objection, that'll be the order.
Item 1B is a lien in Council District 11, notice for public hearing. There are cards on this item.
Okay, so do we move on now to the next section, or is there any items left within that item that we can vote on?
No, Mr. President. Moving on to the next section, items 2 through 6 are items which public hearings have been held.
Members' specials? Members' specials. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next section.
Items 7 through 18 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Members, we're on items 7 through 18. Do we have cards?
Cards on items 8, 9, 11, 12, 13, 15, and 18.
Okay, let's prepare to...Mr. Cracorian? Let's prepare to vote on whatever remains. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes. And the ordinance will be held over for one week, if not, held over to July 23, if not reconsidered.
Okay, but I am optimistic that we will have 12 be for the day is out, so if you would just remind me, we'll take those items up at that time. Okay, what's our next grouping of items?
On the continuation agenda, items 19B is a lien in Council District 11, notice for public hearing.
Any cards?
No cards.
Specials, members' specials?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's in Council District 3.
We pass 14, Mr. Zine.
We'll have to redo it then, for Mr. Rosenthal.
Okay, I'll take care of it, but let's deal with item 19. Let's prepare to vote. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Zine, is item 14, do you want us to reconsider that?
For Mr. Rosenthal.
For Mr. Rosenthal, item 14. Let's vote on reconsideration. Members, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Where are we, Madam Clerk?
Items 20 and 21 are items which public hearings have been held. Motion is required for both items. So, you wish to hold those on the desk?
I wish to get a motion so that we can move these two items.
I move approval of 21, if you don't want to object.
Mr. Parks, would you like to hold them?
21?
Oh, it's amending? So, let's hold them both? Let's go on to the next grouping.
Items 22 and 23 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Any cards? Mrs. Zine, which...
23.
23, held for Mr. Zine. Did you say if there were any cards or not?
Cards on item 23.
Okay, well, Ms. Zine held that one, right?
Yes.
Okay, let's vote on 20...Mr. Reyes?
Just quit, hold 22 for the tall votes.
We'll hold both of those items. Next?
Mr. President, that takes council to items called special or presentations.
Okay, let's delay going into the special meeting. Mr. Englander?
We just delayed. I was going to go to 24.
Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much, members. I just wanted to introduce a very special constituent, Julie Adams, right here. She's 90 years young, she's an actress, born and raised in Iowa, and she was the bathing beauty in The Secret of the Black Lagoon. Give her a big hand right now.
Welcome. And Mr. Labange is presenting her with a resolution from the city of Los Angeles. Well, members and guests, today is a special day. We have several members that are moving on to begin the next chapter in their life, and we have afforded each and every one of them the opportunity to have what we consider a special day, so that we could salute them for their service to the city of Los Angeles. Today is a very special day. We're going to say, see you the next time, to an individual that has been a very close friend, supporter of mine, someone that I'm going to miss in a very, very special way, someone that in eight years, he definitely put an imprint, not just on the 11th district, but in the entire city of Los Angeles. He is a character, and I think Mike Bonin is somewhere here. So, Bill, I think I see in the back, but Mike Bonin is going to have to bring me... You're going to have to go to Bill's house and bring me turkey eggs at least once a month, because Bill and my grandson and I eat them on the weekends. We make egg sandwiches out of them. So, no, that will be your assignment. Plus, you must learn. Great, 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 okay? So, you have the weekend to study that. Ladies and gentlemen, why don't we rise and welcome Billy Rosenthal? Let's give our young people a round of applause. They were enchanting. We all know Bill, and we know there's a lot of things that he can do, one of which he enjoys talking often, and I'm sure he has envisioned in his mind that he will emcee his own salute. As the president, I refuse to allow that. We're going to bring in someone special, Bill, an individual that has been, and someone I know you respect, that's been a shining star in your world of journalism. She's a broadcasting treasure for the city of Los Angeles. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome Pat Morrison. Pat Morrison will emcee today's program. Where is she? Oh, here, there's a hat. I know she's arriving. Pat Morrison, please come forward.
Thank you, President Wesson. You should know there are a lot of presidents here today. By virtue of being a former president of the Los Angeles Press Club, Bill can call himself President Rosenthal. And as a former president of the Press Club as well, I can say, from one president to another, Mr. President, from Madam President, thank you. In the Kingdom of Great Britain, great events are hailed with the ringing of bells. They call those changes. We mark the changes here today on the council in Los Angeles. We have a whole host of kids practically wringing their little arms off to do so. And in case our audience here and the viewers at home don't know, they are here because you, Bill, helped these Title I students from your district to raise more than $30,000 in a matter of days, so that they could perform at the London Olympics last year. You helped these students get from Mark Twain Middle School to the world stage where everyone could hear the bells of their music. How many people in Bill's district could tell similar stories about how he helped them to make the impossible come to pass? For each of them, Bill is a miracle worker. He revived the Press Club. He put homelessness on his list of things to undo. He gave everyone in his district his cell phone number, and he made sure... You're going to change that number now, Bill?
No.
All right. And he made sure that Los Angeles would become a livable place and an accessible place. We roasted Bill at the Press Club last month, and his old friend and fellow campaigner, Warren Beatty, sent us this message. Dear Bill, after the 17,432 political campaigns we have been through or witnessed, I have never known someone who has greater empathy or dedication to public service. It is matched by the quality and constancy of your friendship, which is so treasured by me and my family. We send our love. Did you expect this to be funny? Signed, Warren Beatty. And, Bill is, of course, the consummate animal lover, even to his turkeys and his chickens, so much so that, as I like to tell it, when someone told Bill one of his speeches had laid an egg, Bill said, "Thank you." Now, dear Bill, for your myriad services to everything that goes on two legs, four legs, or two wings, we say thank you in your favorite medium, a video. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. This runway business is a joke besides a crazy thing to do. The real jobs are on the plate now.
Fearless, passionate, outspoken, refreshingly open about his personal life. These are just some of the ways that people describe Los Angeles City Council member, Bill Rosenthal. The mayor and Bill's council colleagues go so far as to call him "the conscience" of the city council.
Let's get this straight. I was the first person to refer to him as "the conscience" of the city council, and I say that all the time, because he is. He cares about social justice. He cares about people who don't have a voice. Cares about the homeless. He's passionate about the people who government sometimes forgets.
Bill will always speak up for those with no voice and fight for those who feel they have no power in city government.
The city has a lot of heart, and one of the things people really like about Bill is that he also has a lot of heart.
I have to smile when I think of Bill. He is such a compassionate person, and the only thing that matches his compassion is his passion for justice and helping the most vulnerable members of our community.
He won't back down. He, when he believes in something, he's passionate about it, and he'll take a stand, which I really admire.
But what defines Bill Rosenthal? The causes and issues that matter most to him over the years are the cornerstones of his public service. As the voice of the West Side on the city council since 2005, Bill has been a champion of public safety, mass transit, and traffic improvement projects. He has a strong record of standing up and protecting the environment and our neighborhoods, and he insists on supportive services for the homeless and our returning veterans. Since taking office in 2005, Bill has fought for more affordable housing in our neighborhoods, especially in the precious coastal communities of the 11th district. Developer Tom Safran shares the same vision for Angelenos and teamed up with Bill to build Delray Square, which was named after Bill Rosenthal.
When he approached the building, he told the cameras, the media, the TV stations who were there, "See, this is what I believe in, should be possible for people, not just the rich, but people who are middle income and lower income. They should have an opportunity to smell the ocean and live in my district, and it shouldn't just be for rich people."
Since his election, Bill has fought tirelessly for our veterans returning from war. He's called for more housing opportunities for homeless vets at the underutilized Veterans Administration campus in West LA. Thanks to constant pressure from Bill, the federal government finally broke ground on renovations to Building 209, a facility that will help homeless vets transition to independent living. Bill also worked with local vets in Pacific Palisades to build the Fisher House, a place where the families of wounded soldiers can live while their loved ones undergo medical treatment for traumatic injuries sustained on the front lines of war.
Yes, he has raised awareness and compassion for our homeless citizens, who are citizens and have the same rights and privileges we all do. But specifically, he did, was a huge proponent, and one of the sole reasons that the upward bound shelter surrounded by Delray got finished, and that's so far has put 1,000 children off the streets and into permanent homes.
As the wars wrapped up, more homeless vets returned to our soil. Many took part in Rosenthal's Vehicles to Homes initiative. The CD-11 program, started by Bill, has helped hundreds of people living in their cars and campers to find permanent housing. Bill discovered an invaluable partner in PATH, people assisting the homeless, and with the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, helping administer the program.
It was a approach where, a win-win approach, basically saying, "Let's help people who are homeless actually get into apartments, people living in vehicles, people living on the streets, and let's get them into apartments. And if we can do that, we actually reduce homelessness in the district and in the neighborhood." He has done that, and I actually think the approach that Bill has taken to address homelessness in his district is a model for the rest of the city.
Addressing homelessness was just one of Bill's passions. So was fighting gridlock, which chokes neighborhoods in his West Side district and throughout all of Los Angeles. As chair of the city's transportation committee, Bill has refocused the city's efforts on initiatives that would enhance the coming rail system approved by voters through Measure R. Bill's long-term vision to reduce reliance on the automobile helped shape initiatives that support walkable and bikeable communities, and he directed policy that has helped change the mindset of our car culture and created even safer roads for all modes of transportation. Under Bill's watch, the city implemented a new bicycle master plan, which will guide the development of a bike infrastructure network that will benefit the entire region. Bill led the effort on the Safe Routes to Schools strategic plan that will leverage greater resources for pedestrian improvements near our schools, and it will engage residents in improving their communities, encourage walking and biking to school. Bill is also credited with implementing the Bicycle Anti-Harassment Ordinance, the first of its kind in the nation. The ordinance legally protects cyclists involved in a collision with a car. Through his YouTube channel, Bill heard about the importance of this law.
And what we've seen is other municipalities, ones that are known as being progressive in a way Los Angeles isn't, such as Berkeley, San Francisco, are copying this ordinance. Like, and it was Bill's. And it's great that they're copying it, don't get me wrong, but this is something that Los Angeles thought of first, and it came out of Bill Rosenthal's office.
When it comes to public safety, Bill has worked tirelessly to make sure his West Side district has a sufficient number of cops and firefighters to stand up and protect the residents of his district. Crime is down, and Bill has added 25 officers to the Summer Patrol for the Venice Beach Boardwalk. During the budget crisis, Bill fought for his constituents to have more fire service on the hillsides, the most fire-prone area of the city of Los Angeles.
I think it gave the community in general a sense of security and of safety, to know that we have a politician that is more a father than a ruler. He's everyone's friend, and he is, becomes part of the family.
And finally, environmentalists always have the strong support of Bill Rosenthal. Bill championed environmentally friendly projects such as the Grand Canal and Bionagoon Restoration Project and the Stream Protection Ordinance.
He's been a huge champion for the Biona wetlands, and we're really fortunate that 150 acres or so are actually owned by the city of Los Angeles. There are another 650 acres that are owned by the state of California, and he's been a champion for all of those wetlands, but particularly the city-owned wetlands. He has empowered us and the community to engage in restoration that is not harmful to the environment.
A fierce supporter of the newly enacted plastic bag ban, Bill also helped expand recycling to apartment buildings and installed recycling bins on our district's public streets.
And Bill was the first person I met who shared my vision of this is what the city can be like, and it's not impossible, and we can make a difference. And we just immediately connected over that, whether it was banning plastic bags, getting L.A. off coal, fighting to legalize urban beekeeping, banning fracking. I mean, whenever we took an initiative on something, Bill was the first one to sign the petition. He was the first one to say, "We can do this."
Standing with environmentalists comes naturally to Bill, especially since he's so connected to his environment. The proud owner of a beehive that sits on what has become somewhat of an urban farm that produces beautiful eggs in colors most people never knew existed. Bill presented half a dozen to Angelenos who did good work in their community. Bill thought the eggs were a great way to show people he cared.
Because I've been to his house on a number of occasions, I've seen the way he loves those chickens he has and the way he takes care of them, and it's very sweet.
When you receive eggs, that is the biggest compliment that one can get. They're homegrown, they're different colors, they're his pride and joy, and he shares them in a very unique way.
You know, there's something special about receiving food from someone, especially food they cultivated themselves, whether it's vegetables from the backyard, or he sort of famously gives out eggs to people. We got some, we got some the day we shot a video with Bill where a couple of professional bike instructors re-taught him how to ride a bike for the, it was the first time he had ridden one in decades. And it was such a festive and happy and fun day, and getting those eggs is sort of a short-term memento, because, you know, we ate them. It was just fun.
He is, in my opinion, the master showman, and he has taken his experience from the media and transferred it to the council. Sometimes I sit up and I say, "Where the heck is Bill going with this?" But the people in his district love him, because he understands what they want and how they feel.
We will miss Bill Rosenthal and his eggs. We will miss his fearless attitude and his can-do spirit. We will miss his passion and his candid commentaries on life and on politics. We will miss the conscience of the city council. We will miss Bill Rosenthal's big heart and his warm smile. And of course, we'll miss the way he lets you know when things are...
Great, 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 great.
Great, 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 great. Great.
I'm not here, Bill, to talk about the 17,000 elections that we lost together. Warren was very kind and didn't mention that we lost all of them. I'm not here to talk about the politics of an issue or the economic impact of an issue. I'm talking, I'm going to tell a story about Bill's heart and his love of people. In 2007, the film industry was under attack. We were about to lose our retired officers from our locations. Bill, fortunately, was the head of the Public Works Committee, and that's where the issue landed. When we approached Bill, when I approached Bill, he looked at the economic impact on the film industry, he looked at the economic impact on the city, but then I told him about the 400 families that were going to be affected, and that's when he began to champion that issue. I told him about the spouses of the retired officers and their families that were dependent upon this income, about the people who gaffed them, who... upon this income, about the people who gaffed them, who sort of rented them out to the film company, and the impact on their families. And that's when Bill became our champion. That's when Bill put together a historic hearing on April 1st of 2007. He saved our retired cops, he saved the impact that it would have had on filming, but that's not why he joined the cause. He joined the cause because 400 families were at stake, and that's what Bill Rosendahl is about. People and their lives and how he can improve them. I'm not a resident of the 11th CD, but I would like to thank you, Bill, for the impact you've had on the other 14 CDs with your heart and your soul and your help of people. Thank you so much for your public service.
Okay, to tie everything up in a bow, we'd like to present to you Bill's former Chief of Staff, your new councilperson for the 11th District, Mike Bonin.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I understood your instructions earlier about the turkey eggs and being able to say "great, great, 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 great." I will try to do my best on those two assignments, and if those are the two toughest assignments you give me, we're going to have a great time over the next four years. One of the things that Bill Rosendahl has been known for is giving voice to people whose voice is not sufficiently heard, not often heard in this building or in the halls of power or high finance. And to start today, there's a few of those voices who wanted to speak and say a few things to Bill, and I'm going to give a second, a few minutes to them.
Good morning, my name is Graciela Gomez. I'm here to recognize Mr. Rosendahl, thank him for all his support on Century Boulevard, especially on the hotels and the LAX gateway. Especially as the working class, it really benefited us when he supported the living wage, so we're here to thank him and may God bless him forever.
Those are workers from Unite Here Local 11 who work along Century Boulevard, who are making a better wage today because of the work Bill and Janice Hahn did on the living wage ordinance on Century Boulevard. There is, there's so much to say about Bill Rosendahl. There's so many stories I could tell. And, you know, before I was Bill's Chief of Staff, back in 2005, I was his campaign manager. And when we did the ballot designation, the ballot designation that Park Skelton, his consultant, came up with was journalist slash professor. Bill was at the time teaching at Cal State Dominguez Hills. And Rick Taylor, who was working on the other side, challenged that ballot designation, claiming that Bill was just a lecturer. And David Asper Johnson, the late, great editor and publisher of the Argonaut newspaper, called Cal State Dominguez Hills and confirmed that his title actually was distinguished visiting professor. So throughout the course of the campaign until Bill was sworn in, I always called him professor. And I'm thinking today of him as a professor because I've been awash with emotions this morning, remembering all the different things he's taught me and taught our staff, taught some of you, and taught our constituents. You know, the scariest part of my day, or the part of any of our staff members' day, was in between 9:15 and 9:45 in the morning, when Bill was on his way to work, and he was calling with the seven or eight ideas he had that morning. And you'd get off the phone and you'd talk to other staff, and you'd be baffled and exasperated because some of them we didn't have the money for, or we didn't have the time or the staff for, or they defied the laws of physics and gravity, or maybe just the law. And almost always, Bill managed to get some of that stuff done every day. It was impossible, and he got it done through the sheer force of his personality, his incredible optimism. You know, working for Bill has been a seminar every day in possibility. The thing that was so wonderful about working with Bill is that every day, in that early morning phone call, he challenged each of us, he drew a circle around us and said, "Fill this up." He challenged us to fill that up with our hearts and our ambitions and to grow into that space, and so many of us did. Bill also gave us all room to grow in our personal lives. When Prop 8 passed, Bill gave me the room to work on trying to repeal that hateful measure in my spare time. When my sister grew ill and died, I could not have had a better and stronger person at my side than Bill Rosendahl, who gave me the room to be with my family and with my sister. Thank you, Bill. And the thing about Bill that we all know is he is all, he is all heart. You know, we can talk about the fruits of his labor, and we can talk about some of the things we talked about in the video. What we didn't talk about is how driven and how passionate he was for making sure that the unburied remains of the Gabriellina Tongva found a safe and quiet resting place at Playa Vista. Or how often Bill made time out of his busy and crazy schedule to visit someone who he didn't even know all that well in a hospital room, so someone wouldn't be lonely in their illness. Or how when Bill toured Skid Row and was advised by health professionals, "You need to wear gloves because of the risk of staph infection," Bill got down on his knees at the early hours of the morning and held people by the hand and hugged them. The heart of Bill Rosendahl knows absolutely no bounds, and it has guided him, and it is his greatest legacy. Bill, I thank you for everything, and I absolutely love you. A friend of Bill's wanted to say hello by video, someone who used to sit in these chambers, who's caught up in the chaos of Washington DC, and I believe we, can we go? Yeah?
Good morning. I'm so sorry I couldn't be with you all as the city council chamber comes together to send off our dear friend and colleague, Bill Rosendahl. I'm in Washington DC this week, fighting the good fight for the people that I serve in the 44th District, but I wanted to join you via modern technology. I couldn't let a few thousand miles keep me away from this very special farewell to a great man, a wonderful friend, and passionate public servant. I had the honor of serving alongside Bill for over six years. His devoted leadership and passionate commitment to public service and the people of the 11th District was simply remarkable and will be sorely missed. For many decades, long before he even joined the LA City Council, Bill has always opened his doors to people in need. In the 1970s, he let a group of homeless teenagers stay in his Venice Beach apartment, including a young couple who slept in his walk-in closet until they could find suitable housing. As many of you know, this is only one example of the countless selfless acts of kindness and humanity that Bill Rosendahl has shared with those in need. And one of his most notable causes in public service was to stop the historic agreement between LAX and Airport Neighbors, ending airport expansion. He championed this project until the bitter end for his community. His fierce commitment to the people who live, work, and play in the city of LA is simply extraordinary. His witty sense of humor, his gregarious laugh, and electric energy will be greatly missed on the city council. Bill, we all go through life, working with and meeting so many people along our way, and there are those people who make an impression on us for their unique DNA. You are one of those people. I can still see you as you stood to speak on the issues that mattered to all of us. Your passion, your enthusiasm, your courage was unmatched in these city council chambers. You were the champion for our veterans, for our working people, for the LGBT community, for women, for the poor, for the homeless. In fact, you are the Venice Statue of Liberty. Bring me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free, the wretched refuse of your teeming shore, send these, the homeless, tempests tossed to me. These were your roommates. Bill, I wish you health and happiness in this next chapter of your life. And when I'm spending a Friday night alone, I will find comfort in the words you always told me. If you were straight, we would be a couple. God bless you.
I just got to say, since that was an impromptu moment there, Janice and I have had that little joke all our lives, and of course Tommy LaBonde was always aware of it, you know, we would kind of giggle about that issue, but I can't believe she said it. Thank you, Janice.
Mr. President, I believe the Marquez Knowles Homeowners Association has a presentation to give, Bill. Hold this.
Good morning. I would like to thank Bill Rosendahl for being the councilman of people. He's been a friend, a brother, a councilman, and a mentor for many of the people that are here today. He has listened, he has heard, he has supported, and he certainly has given all of us this big, huge smile of his. He's been very generous in presenting many of his constituents with awards, with commendations, and their heirlooms, they're very much appreciated by all of those that have received them. Today, I'd like to turn the table, and I would like to put a big smile on his face and give him a commendation that he certainly deserves for all of us. I would like to briefly read it. It's in recognition of outstanding leadership and support in enhancing, protecting the quality of life in our community. We hereby present this certificate with deep appreciation for your caring efforts to make our community a better place to live through your support with outspoken strength, determination on the city council floor, your kind understanding of the needs of individuals, and your adherence to a solid code of ethics. Thank you very much, Bill.
Mr. President, I've tried very hard for eight years to keep Bill in check, but he's insisting, as one of his last acts as my boss, that I call a few more people up to speak.
Why, I mean, it's like I knew it was going to happen. This comes as no surprise.
Chief Beck.
Come here, Bill. Don't make me paraphrase Janice.
Well, that's interesting, Jim.
So, Bill Rosendahl, this is a man who loves his job, and you know, there is, my mom always said, you know, "If you love your job, you never work a day in your life." And I have never met a public servant that was more enthusiastic about his district and about making it better. You know, I was called night and day by Bill on issues within his jurisdiction, and you know, I answered every call, I think.
Yes, you did.
And every time, it was, "How do we fix this? How do we move forward? You know, how do I make my district better?" And I think that the city can be very, very proud of their selection and of the performance of Bill Rosendahl. He's a great man, he will continue to be an icon in the city, and I look forward to a continued relationship with the Los Angeles Police Department. And from the men and women of the Los Angeles Police Department, I say, "So long, but not farewell."
Thank you, brother. He's a good man. And thank you, Antonio, for making me the chief.
There's two more, Mr. President, that he wanted to have speak. I'll call first the constituent who suggested to Bill back in 2004 that he run, one of the key players in the Mountain Gate area of our district, former member of the Fire Commission here in Los Angeles, Louise Frankel.
And this wasn't on the script, but I wanted to make sure we did this. It's Louise and Ernie Frankel. Many of you know, when Louise was head of the homeowners group in the valley, Tarzana Property Homeowners Association, she asked me to bring my cameras. I'm the cable guy. So I brought my cameras, and we started to do informative educational programming out of that operation that she created. I'll never forget when there was Warren Christopher and Daryl Gates screaming at each other, and then the next day we had the riots. So we were right on top of everything, and it was you who told me to run for this job. She said to me, "Why don't you run for city council?" I said, "Why should I do that?" She said, "Because they need you." I thought about it, I thought about it, you motivated me. I would not be standing here as a retiring council member if it wasn't for Louise and Ernie Frankel. Say it for you.
Well, you look back over the things that you've done for the years, the ones that you're all the most proud of, and I think I can say with out of hesitation that enlisting this gentleman to be a city councilman and serve all the people the way I feel that he did when I was around him. So, thank you, Bill.
Bless you.
And health and happiness forever.
Thank you, thank you. Means a lot now, that's for sure. Ernie is a Marine, Ernie is an incredible leader in his own right. The two of them together, I've been together for many years. How old are you both now? 90. 90 years old, the two of them are. I'll say a very few words. Bill Rosendahl is one of a kind. Everyone has paid homage to him this morning, and he deserves every bit of it. He is the most unpolitical politician I have ever known. That's true. A remarkable, kind, caring, generous, thoughtful, intelligent, wise human being who cares about people. We need more like him. Thank you. I just want to acknowledge the Garcettis and congratulate them on their son.
Okay, Bill.
Being our mayor. That's wonderful, love it.
Yeah, one more, it's my understanding.
I have one more. Many of you know that in 1968, I came to this great city for the first time. I was working... I was working for Bobby Kennedy. I had been with him in Indiana, where I ran the fourth congressional district. Bobby asked me to come to Portland, Oregon. I brought 40 other college kids, and we went to Portland, Oregon for three weeks and brought out the vote. On election day, he wanted to meet with me and thank me for this, that, and the other. And of course, it was a great moment again. And after he thanked me, he casually asked me, how am I gonna do in Oregon? And I told him, unfortunately, he was gonna lose. So the rumor was, it was a kid named Rosendahl who didn't tell the politician what he needed to know, but told him the truth. Well, he ended up losing in Oregon. And then, of course, he invited me to Los Angeles, where we were working on the rest of the campaign, getting really excited, because we knew we would win in Los Angeles. We knew that Bobby Kennedy stood for the coalition of life, for him to get the Latino community, the great, and the union folks, brown, black, yellow, green, purple, all of us in humanity were part of the Bobby Kennedy campaign. Well, we all know history. When he decided to go through the pantry to go to where the press were rather than through the crowd, and any of us who worked that closely with him know that taking Bobby through a crowd was a hell of a job. They tear your shirts off, they scream, they cry, people get very hysterical and all that. And it was a long day, so he went through the pantry. And as he walked through with Paul Chirade, who was the most powerful labor leader at the time, they got shot. And Bobby's last words were, how's Paul? Well, my next speaker to get up is Paul Chirade, who never forgot that moment, as did all of us who were part of that scene. And he said, I'm tearing down this Ambassador Hotel. We don't need no living disgusting description of what happened there. What we need is something alive and well, that stands for what Bobby Kennedy stood for. So Paul Chirade stepped to the plate, fought like hell. Couple of years ago, we did it, and now we have a collection of schools, 3,500 students, like a Harvard-like, Berkeley-like, right there in central LA. Would not have happened without Paul Chirade. The Honorable Paul Chirade.
Bill always speaks well and loudly, and he's been a good friend. We were together there that night in 1968, and I knew how important he was in the campaign, not only in Indiana, but also Oregon, even though we lost there, but also in Los Angeles. It was a great campaign, and those of us who were part of it have lived on and lived on the way Robert Kennedy did. One of the persons that night was, who held Robert Kennedy the first seconds after he was shot, was Juan Romero, who recently said, I have a family now. I did what Bobby wanted me to do. He's in construction work. He says, I have a family and a job. I did what Bobby wanted me to do. He was a busboy in that hotel, and he bribed the other busboys to be able to go up to the Kennedy rooms and be able to serve drinks and food. Bob Kennedy always came over to him and picked up the tray and put it down, came back and shook his hand. And Juan always said, he had a very strong handshake, and he looked at me, and I felt like a human being. That was the Robert Kennedy that Bill and I knew. And so 45 years ago, yes, we had a wonderful, great victory that night, and a terrible tragedy ended. But Bill and I have both adopted the legacy of Robert Kennedy of peace and justice and lived our lives that way. And I really thank Bill for the work he's done to get that school built. There's 4,000 kids there now. There are five high schools, three middle schools, and three elementary schools with six different curricula. And that's like a major college campus. Those students come from a nine-block area. That includes all of those commercial buildings in Mid-Wiltshire, so it's one of the most depressed and compressed areas in the city. And so we've done our work because we believed in the legacy of Robert Kennedy, of peace and justice. One of the things that we still don't understand about the Kennedy brothers is not only did they solve the Cuban Missile Crisis, they began negotiations with Khrushchev and Castro after the Cuban Missile Crisis as a turn towards peace. Unfortunately, days after Dallas, we turned towards war in Vietnam. And we have to consider that as one of Robert Kennedy's and Jack Kennedy's legacy of turning towards peace. We haven't learned that yet very well. Hopefully, we will. And I thank Bill Rosendahl for his help, for his encouragement. I also thank him for Mike Bonin. He's given us, this city, a wonderful person as his successor. And I think that, you know, that is a great gift to this council and also to the city. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Mr. Zine. Then we'll go to Mr. Alacon.
Bill, great, 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 great. It has been, it's been a lot of fun working with you over these last six years, and I have to tell you, the city of Los Angeles is in a better place than it was when we began. And I can't think of a better way to end your service at City Council than with a tremendous victory at the Supreme Court last Wednesday, which will benefit so many people. Hopefully, there will be fewer Michael Stones out there and more Bill Rosendalls who can step forward into the light and be who they want to be and add to this wonderful diverse place we call the United States. You have been a champion for the LGBT community, but more importantly, you fought for your constituents left and right. In fact, I hated to vote against you because you were so passionate. Even when I completely disagreed with you, you were so passionate about what you believed in, and you never stopped the fight for what you believed in. But most of the time, we agreed on public policy. We served during a really rough time. The downturn of our economy put pressures on us like we would have never wanted and never would have imagined. But we fought to protect those people who would be most affected by the downturn in the economy. And for that fight, I want to congratulate you. I only hope that the next group of politicians will use your role model to exemplify the true feelings of their constituents and bring the same kind of passion, debate, and honor to the position that you have. You've been a great servant to the city of Los Angeles. It's been a lot of fun working with you, very colorful indeed, but nothing wrong with color, brother. And so we appreciate you, we love you, and I'm not gonna go as far as Janice Hahn on that, but I can certainly appreciate the perspective. God bless you, Bill.
Councilmember Zine? Okay, Councilor LeBonde.
Nobody has a bigger heart, Billy. I want to first say greetings from my mothers up in heaven who loved you. My mother would say, turn on the Z-Channel. Were you the Z-Channel for a while, too, before you were the Century and all the other things that you did? Public affairs had its best with Bill Rosendahl. But several years ago, I used to sit over there because of the alphabet, and I talked to someone who sat next to me, and I asked, do they like anybody in the 11th? Do they have anybody in the 11th? I'm not out at Santa Anita, they don't run 11 races out there, but you know, it's like asking, who's gonna win in the 7th? Anyway, no one goes to the racetrack anymore, so I wasted two minutes there. The point is, they told me they had no one in the 11th. And that afternoon, I went out and did your show. And I always love doing a show because he brings the best out of you. That's what Bill Rosendahl does, brings the best out of you. And I said, Billy, have you ever thought about running for council? And I don't know if Billy was telling me the truth, but he said, kind of not really, you know? I mean, it was a different time, the cable industry was transforming, and all of a sudden, here's Bill, a candidate, you got the great community support, you did a wonderful job. You cared about people, as Mr. Bonin said, from Fifth Street all the way to Bel Air. Every which way you cared about people, which was so true. You were very supportive of issues that I were involved in. I don't know how many times we were on other sides of the street, but we always came together in the middle to help Los Angeles. I'm very proud of you for being a fighter and standing there, and just six months ago, you had a three-and-two count. But you got a hit to left field, and you made around second and third, and you're gonna make it home, brother. You're gonna make it home. I just want to tell you, there's a lot of special things happening in this council and all that's going on now. You're one of the special people who've contributed to so much good, and redistricting, that put the coastal district together. And when I speak about Bill Rosendahl, I say, this is a man who loved people and loved it together. And God bless you. Janice Hahn's on a plane in Washington. She did that an hour ago, ladies and gentlemen. There's a thing called technology. They shot it out here. She was so excited that everybody loved what she said, and she meant what she said at the end, which is true. And she loves you, Billy, personally. So let's hear it again for Bill Rosendahl.
Thank you, Councilor LeBonde. Councilmember Zine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Cable Guy, that's when we first met, Bill. You were the Cable Guy. I was the Police Protective League Director, did a number of shows, always a gentleman, always direct and to the point, and that was great times. Then you got elected to the L.A. City Council, and for the last number of years, we've been seatmates, talked about all kinds of things. And I won't forget the Christopher Street West Parade a few years back, when you're on the back of my motorcycle, we're cruising down the parade route, and you're dancing on the motorcycle. I'm saying, Bill, you're gonna kill us on this motorcycle. You can't be dancing on a motorcycle. The LAX, your passion for the Westchester community, and the day that you and I traveled down, I picked up at your home, looked at the chickens and the turkeys, and went to LAX. And we did that spot check to see what was visible with law enforcement. You got on the phone with Gina Marie Lindsay, and you weren't too pleased with the lack that we saw there. A man who did follow-up to make sure it was done properly. Mountain Gate, there was a fire in Mountain Gate. You asked me to go and attend a meeting on your behalf. You were tied up with something else. The Frankel family was there, and I'll never forget the fact, the love and admiration that they have for you now and they had then. The meetings at your home and how you've opened your home up to people, you have a heart that is incredibly, incredibly dedicated to humanity. And when you came down with cancer, you weren't here for a bit, but then you came back, and you struggled to come back because you made a commitment to the people of the city of Los Angeles and your district that you would be there for them, whether you were sick or not. And when you were going through chemo, you were going through radiation, and you could hardly walk, and I remember you couldn't speak because the radiation and what the chemo did to you, and you were still coming into work because you made a commitment to the people in your district. And as I see you now recovering, I see you now moving forward, I see you with that smile, that Bill Rosendahl smile, that really shows human compassion for your fellow human being. But your personal life has been of giving, of helping, of supporting people, and the fact you've got youngsters here that in years from now, they're gonna remember who Bill Rosendahl is and what he did, what he did for the community. The fact that this audience is here today to show love and respect for you, for what you have done. And you're passionate. I remember the days you put on your veteran's hat and fight for the military, when we did the cake cutting for the United States Army, their birthday, there to serve your country in the military, and here to serve your community as an L.A. City Councilman. And if you hadn't come down with cancer, I'm sure you'd be doing four more years. You'd continue and do the 12 instead of the 8. But Bill, like I said, there's life after this. We will get together, we will commiserate, we will look at the council and say, what are they coming up with now? But the fact is, you have given, and given, and given, and you have not used any excuses to continue serving the people who have elected you. You've lived up to that, and I commend you for that. And I know you believe in God, and God has a plan, has a wish, has a desire. And as we set into the sunset, we will continue to be friends, and continue to hang out, and continue to do stuff, and you'll continue to pass out eggs. It's surprising no one's passing out eggs to you today because you're no one for passing out eggs, as you do with the chickens that you raise. But God bless you. You've been a good seatmate, you've been a good ally here on the City Council, and all the issues that you have fought for in your district continuously fought for the people who are here to show their love, respect, and support for you, and I join them in applauding you. And I will say this, it is great, 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 great. Your trademark, Bill, the great guy. God bless you, Bill. Thank you.
Colleagues, we have a lot on our agenda today, and I hate to say this, but please, if we can stay within our limits, I appreciate it very much. Councilmember Corretts.
Well, Bill, this is a great, great, great day for all of us, and most of us here probably don't remember, this is not the first celebration of you here in these chambers, but I know my dear friend and your dear friend, Joel Wax, had a celebration for you when we declared Bill Rosendahl Day in the city of Los Angeles, long before you ever dreamed of being an elected official. And I think that was to recognize, in addition to you just being an all-around great guy, the fact that you were an amazing journalist, and that your show was somewhat in jeopardy because of the corporate structure that you had to deal with, and the fact that you really dealt with the First Amendment, you put every issue on and every perspective. I was occasionally on there every once in a while when I had a crazy issue, but you were a great journalist. And even though, I know and we all know that you're a great progressive, as the host of that show, you really didn't know, because you just dealt with the issues, you asked the right questions, and that was great. Probably one of the moments I enjoyed the most on the council was when Ray Bradbury, a great visionary like yourself, came to council. That was a great moment. He was not at his healthiest and his sharpest, and suddenly, he returned and became his 30-year-old self for a few minutes. And the high point of that, I believe, was when you raced over to him and gave him some turkey eggs. And I thought it was just a great moment. It's been great to see that you can be a champion of peace and a man of great love and still be a fighter so hard for all the causes that you care about. And I've enjoyed knowing you and serving with you. It's just been a truly wonderful experience. I look forward to working with you in the next phase. I hope you do some great things as a journalist. And I have to say, you scared the heck out of me a while back when this illness started to hit you. I visited you a few times, and when you had both your cancer and pneumonia, I thought only Bill Rosendahl could survive this, because I know the most important thing in fighting cancer is having a positive attitude. And if there's anyone that has a positive attitude, more than you, about life in general, I have yet to meet that person. But you scared me, and as you know, on Yom Kippur, and I'm not the most spiritual person in the world, I spent the day visiting one synagogue after another and saying a prayer for you. And I'm so glad those prayers were answered and that you're here, and I look forward to seeing the great things that you do in the years to come and to continuing to call you my very good friend.
Thank you. Councilmember Perry.
Bill, Bill, I just wanted to give you the recognition that you deserve for changing the future of veterans who are homeless in this city. Until you got there, you know, that issue had lain somewhat dormant, and you actually moved it forward on behalf of people who may never know what you did for them, but it was the right thing to do. And thank you for being an ally and a partner and a friend in that fight. And thank you for being an ally and a partner and a friend in that fight.
Councilmember Englander.
Keep it within our timeframe. Yeah, right. I'll try. I'll try not to break down. I can't even begin to tell you what an honor and a privilege it's been to serve with you. And thinking about just the last couple of years together on the council, but certainly before that, my other role. You have just been a shining beacon for City Hall and the entire city. And your character, the passion that you approach everything from. You're a giant. And it's just been, I'm in awe. Every time when you speak up, when you speak and you stand on any issue, the passion that it comes from is mesmerizing. And you're just, you're one of the few that just... Is one thing that Greg always taught me. Do things for the right reasons. That's all he used to say. Do things for the right reasons. And when you think about somebody's career, yours, that has always done things for the right reasons. We've had the opportunity, not only, and everybody hears you publicly often, but sitting in closed session meetings when the mics are off and there's no cameras, you're just as passionate, you're just as caring. It's the same fight for the right reasons. And I'm gonna miss that. And you are an incredible, incredible leader for the city of Los Angeles, what you've done, not only for the city, but for your district. You know, every time I knew you'd stand up, you'd start something with "my people." And it was always about the people that you were representing. It always started from that place. It was never, "This is how I feel," or "This is what I want to do. This is what I care about." It was always what they care about. When Michael got up here earlier and talked about you getting down on your knees and holding people's hands, that's when the cameras are off and the mics are off, and it's just who you are. You've always been that person. And if each of us can have a little piece of that each and every day, we would be a much better city. I love you. God bless you. I look forward to this new chapter in your life and continuing to work with you. And you're very inspiring. God bless you.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Bill, you don't remember this, but long before I was in elected office, I think long before I even ran for office, I was gonna appear on your show. And I actually don't even remember what I was talking about. But I do know that I was scared to death to be confronting you on your show or having you confront me on your show. Because I held you in such high regard as a journalist, and you were kind of the gold standard for political and governmental discourse with your show. And I was petrified about going on your show. And you know, here we are, our last day, serving together as colleagues. And there are times when you get worked up that I'm still petrified of you. And the reason is because of the great energy and the great passion that you bring and your courage under fire, I guess would be a way to say it. And especially as a veteran, that would be what I would say. That you're somebody who is fearless about speaking truth to power. You're fearless about taking on the mightiest of enemies and challenges and slaying the dragons. And that, I think, has been your hallmark. And the reason is because of your heart that everybody's talked about. There's that old expression about people who wear their heart on their sleeve. Well, I think you're the tallest member of this council, and your sleeve is not even big enough to contain your heart because it defines everything about you. When you entered this council as a member, on your first day, you made history, being the first openly gay man to serve around this horseshoe. So on your first day, you made history. Now that your time is coming to a close here as a member, you've been enduring this struggle that you've been going through, fighting the cancer that you've been exceptionally open about discussing. And I think in that respect, you've made history as well. Neither of those things defines you as a human being. They're important things that you've talked about, but you're defined by so many other things. But I think in those two areas, they're emblematic of everything else that you do, which is to inspire people. Inspire people who might be down. Inspire people who may feel that they have a burden that's too difficult to bear. But your positive energy and your inspiration by example, I think, has touched people that you will never even know about. And there are people in this city, there are probably people in other parts of this country, who today are drawing inspiration and strength in a difficult time that they're facing because of you and the inspiration that you've shown them. And I think we're all incredibly grateful for that. We're all incredibly grateful for the great service that you've provided to this city. I know that there's incredible things still ahead of you in your next round of service, in whatever that may be. I'm looking forward to standing there with you as I have all along. Thank you very much, Bill, for your service.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. When I think back of when we first started, I remember Louise and Ernie Frankel, we were talking about a issue on Mountain Gate. It was a pathway. And when your first days in council, it was very controversial. And you were trying to juggle all the different interests, the stakeholders. That's how painful it was for you to not get so-and-so upset, but yet you had this other conversation with the other party. But a decision had to be made. And I recall your staff kind of juggling it up in the air, and you finally made the decision. And I saw you go through this painful process, time after time after time, because of your sense of generosity, commitment, that you want to satisfy everybody. Well, it is a great lesson to see how one can still can give of themselves and still be enduring such stress and come in here and be so happy, so energetic, knowing you have all of this weighing on you. I learned a lot from that, sitting next to you. We've been through a lot of intense conversations, very personal, about our parents and our future and the aging process and life. And I've learned a lot from you, Bill. So I want to thank you for your friendship. I want to thank you for your heart. And I want to thank you for the pain that not only do you endure, but the happiness you give as a result of some really good decisions and how positive you've been for everyone here in this room and throughout your district and the city. So thank you, Bill, and wish you good luck. I know we'll still talk to each other. It's my last day as well. So I look forward to a great future. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Eddie.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Rosendahl, what I've done purposely was make this gentleman wait a little bit. He's been on the queue for quite a while. He's a person that a handful of people know. And he has served this council unbelievably well. Today is his last day. So it is a special day for him as well. A man who was a great leader when he was committee chair of HCD. A man who led this council for six years as the council president. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to present to you Mayor-elect Eric Garcetti.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you all. Please sit. This is not my day. This is yours, Bill. So Bill Rosendahl and I, well, I think we all first met him before we ever met face-to-face because we saw you in our living room, and we felt like we knew you. I'm sure you had that experience with so many people who just said, came up to you and said, "Thank you." For doing something that we shouldn't have to thank anybody for doing, but which you uniquely did, which was to elevate our democracy up at a time when so many people were taking it down. When media was increasingly becoming about the soundbite, you forced us to think, to answer. I never thought I'd be there. First, I watched one of your two main constituents that I brought with me, my mother and my father here. I'd watch my father get on that show. He's just your photographer today, so don't mind him. Can you clear the aisle, sir, please? Can we get you out of here? And we had some quiet conversations back then. I was teaching at Occidental College. And it was like a whirlwind when suddenly I was one of 13 candidates running for city council. And you so beautifully put all of us on a stage in your studio and had 13 people actually debate each other. And, you know, the Bill Rosendahl a lot of people didn't know from that time was the quiet things you would say to us off to the side, which is something I've always appreciated, Bill, that you've done in here, too. Your speeches make the headlines, as well they should. But you're a great teacher. You're kind of a, you give a hint, you give a suggestion, you give a perspective. And it's always the tougher things that most people don't say. You know, when things are going well, it's very easy to pile on. But you take people who are doing well, and you give a little perspective. When Bratton was at his height, I remember you taking me to the side and saying, "Look, I know you're a civil libertarian. It's great what he's doing on crime here, but did you know this was going on there? Look into that." That was before you got elected. I remember the times when, you know, you would, the quiet spaces where we had dinner, me and you and Hade and Amy, and able to discuss life and kind of what things are about. You seem to, I've kind of jokingly referred to you as Forrest Gump, but that doesn't, only in the sense that you're there for history. Anything that happens here, Bill Rosendahl stands up and says, "Yeah, I was there. I knew him. I ran his campaign. I was his main fundraiser. He's my best friend." Wait a second, he's on the phone right now. One of those things is like what Bill Rosendahl seems to always have in his back pocket. About any famous person, you should write a history book about what you have seen and what has touched you. Those quiet conversations and the suggestions have also revealed you, in some ways, these moments when we lionize one another, it's also important, because I've seen you struggle with this, to remind ourselves of just how human we are. And I think while a lot of us fit into our suit and kind of never reflect, you struggle still with that, which is a beautiful quality. You struggle with not only the things you do well, but the things that you want to do better with in life. And you struggle with them with each one of us, too, pushing us to be better and to do the right things. You know, that is the deepest compliment that I can pay to you because what you ask is not just who's at the table and what voices we are hearing. You ask who's not even at the table at all, what voices are missing. What can I do to a friend who has a very comfortable moment and disrupt them a little bit? Because I'd want them to do the same thing to me. It doesn't make it easy, but it makes it right. And in doing so, you have disrupted a city. And from that, it's kind of like an ocean floor, you know? After a hurricane, it's the richest time for marine life to eat. And if you just let it settle and stay that way, it'll die off. We need that. And, Bill, you have done that. And so I love you, too. Thank you for what you have done for this city. And you ain't going anywhere, buddy. So whether it's on an airport issue, I think you probably have a few friends here, or whether it's on homelessness, or whether it's how to beat a disease, or whether it's how to just be a human being. Thank you for being the spiritual, caring, human being that you are, Bill. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor-elect Garcetti.
Bill?
Yes?
Just, just about everything that could have been said about you, I believe, was said on this day.
I haven't heard from Parks.
Except for, I have one tidbit that I don't think anybody knows, and Bill has probably forgotten. Bill and I were seatmates when Mayor-elect Garcetti was the president. And one day, we were doing a presentation. And Bill leans over to me, I mean, he's the quickest member on his feet. I'm telling you, that mind is just going at 90 miles an hour. And he leans over to me, we're honoring this guy, and he says, "Herbie, who's the black guy we're honoring?" So I tell him, I said, "This guy is, this guy is a pretty good guy. He's done this, he's done that, he's done this." A second later, Bill pushes his button, jumps up, and says exactly what I told him, verbatim. He almost brought the guy to tears. So I told Bill, "If you do that to me again, I'm gonna start giving you wrong information." Ladies and gentlemen, let's hear from our dear friend, my dear friend, who I truly love, Bill Rosendahl.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank. I'm not gonna talk about what I've done. If you want to know about it, just stop writing about it, you know? And when you talk about family, I'm wearing the tie of my brother Frank. I was his caregiver, and he died. And all I kept of Frank's stuff was this tie. And I think of my brother now because his two sons, Chris and Frank Rosendahl, have agreed to be my primary caregivers. They're both living in my complex as time goes on. And anybody who has cancer knows that what you try to do is have a manageable disease and be able to continue to make a difference with your life. But you do need help on certain levels of yourself. So I want to thank my brother Frank and for sharing his two sons with me. I want to thank my brother Tom, who's laid up right now himself in a very serious way, and his lovely wife and his three children as well. And Kenny and Adam, who are two other people who've lived at my home. And Swami ex-Swami, who I consider part of my family as well. So first, that is my physical family in Mar Vista. But there are parts of me that just get more excited when I'm with my family in the city. My family in the city are responsible for me doing well around here. Why? Because I don't have any answers. We're all looking for answers. We're all trying to figure out what's right, what's wrong. Can I have a hand, Mike, somebody?
We better give him the hand.
Okay. And frankly, when I walk into a room, I don't know what my position is unless a lot of homework was done ahead of time. And the homework is done in part by staff, in part by the city bureaucracy, in part by the community. And I'll turn to staff on whatever the issue is, and I'll say, "Help me on this one." And they'll do the best they can. I'll do the best I can. And then two things happen. Sometimes we're very successful because we did the right thing. And sometimes we're wrong. And you know, nobody is magic. We are together magic. And as a group, we can make a huge difference. I even see Captain Peters over there nodding. He's always protecting me and watching my backside to serve us, you know? Or even Michael Hunt over here, who's giggling. We've all known him in other lifetimes. Or Jay Handel over there, been working for the last four days on the CASD project and trying to figure out a solution. But I want to start with the young folks. I gotta tell you, I was near death. And I just, somebody said, "Bill, they're on the tube." And, you know, Robert Kavasik got excited and got involved. And you're on NBC. We turned it on. I mean, I was barely able to understand, and I started to cry. And I started to feel proud that you had made it to London and that you were there, giving us great honor as a nation. And I love you for doing that. You were the ambassadors of the United States of America. Thank you very much for that. There's Margaret Hashemajad standing next to me. Margaret has always been with me for 18, 19 years. She went from the cable business to me, to the government business, has kept me in line, is the only one who's got the guts to take me on every now and then. is the only one who's got the guts to take me on every now and then. And she did. And she kept an incredible loyalty and love. I just gotta thank you very much for that. Della picked up after Margaret left. And boy, has she had a hell of a year, haven't you? Thank you, Della.
We survived.
Yeah, survived and thrived. And I don't want to single anybody else out in particularly because if I did, I'd offend somebody else. And I want you all to know that that's how I live life. I try not to be negative to anybody or to find something positive in somebody and bring that out and get that bright light. And my staff has been around me, helping me be the politician that listens, asks the questions, does his homework, and does the best job he can. So, I'd like to just give it to Mike Bonn and let him wrap it up for them. And I'll say this about Mike. The other day, he was emceeing an event, and I sat there like I think a proud father would be. God, he is so good. I am so honored that the people voted for him and are now giving him an opportunity to serve all of us. See that? He just told me something, which he always does, and he gives me good advice. I want to thank my colleagues. Those of you who have served with me on this city council, duh, of course I should thank my colleagues. I wouldn't be standing here if it wasn't the cooperation and the coordination and the working together that we've done as a team. It's been a real privilege sitting here, discussing issues, working with my colleagues, and trying to figure out how we can serve the people and make the world a better place. That's what it's all about. We always see things positively. Why not? Life is too short to begin with. So, let's make the best of every second we have. And bell ringers, you're just down the street from me? Maybe you'll come by the house and play someday, and I'll give you all a half a dozen eggs. And as for this egg business, people don't understand, now they do, is that, you know, what do you give somebody if you really feel good about something, about what they did or how they are? And since I don't believe in any of that corrupted crap, what's better than a good egg that has everything in it? And then, you become a good egg, too. So, let's stay positive, everybody. Let's believe that together we can make a difference. Thank you, staff, for being my family down here and being with me. And most of all, I want to thank all my constituents who have believed in me, who've stayed with me, and are here today, right now, to honor me. Thank you, thank you, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have one more surprise speaker. And I'm gonna let him speak because come Monday, he's gonna be signing all of our checks. So, I want to ask Controller to be Ron Galperin to come up and say a few words.
You know, there's an old Hebrew proverb that, who is honored? He who has the opportunity to honor others. And I can think of no greater honor than the opportunity to honor you for all of your years of public service and all of your leadership. And amazing staff, amazing work that you have done. It's an honor to be coming in and serving soon as the Controller of the City of Los Angeles, following in the footsteps of Wendy Gruel, to have the opportunity to work with our fantastic new mayor, Eric Garcetti, and with our great new city attorney, with an amazing council president in Mr. Wesson. And I also wanted to thank all those council members who are outgoing, and most notably also to thank Councilmember Zine for their service in the City of Los Angeles. And we thank them so much. And I look forward to working with everybody here in the years to come. And thank you for the opportunity to honor you.
You're a class act.
All right, let's hear it up for Bill Rosendahl. Give it up. Okay, Bill, as your party departs, I guess I'll go back to business, or are we gonna get another number from the bell ringers, or...
Whoa.
No, I guess we follow those sergeant's instructions. I might have messed up, guys. Okay, Madam Clerk, on items 5, 11, and 14, we want to do super forthwith. So, let's open the roll. Could you read them, and then let's see if we can get rid of those?
Item 11, call special for cards.
Okay, read the... Yes, Mr. Krikorian.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask that the council reconsider Council File 11-0827, which was number 32 on Wednesday's agenda. This was an item referring to the dissolution of a bid, which the Controller's Office suggests the ordinance must be approved today. And so, I'd like to ask and move that it be reconsidered so that we can vote again on it today.
Okay, I will do that. I've got two things that I have to take care of, and then I'll take care of that.
It's an ordinance, Mr. President, so we need to do it while it's...
Okay, no, that's why I'm trying to get these ordinances done while we have...
Thank you.
12. Okay. Where's Mr. Sacks?
Oh, I can imagine. That was your voice on the video. So, maybe you'll do those three in reverse. You'll do this, and then you'll go to the brush.
That's what I always wanted to do. That was all I ever wanted to do. I was a newspaper reporter before I got into this.
Is Mr. Sacks not here?
You know, you really are gonna be... You're your own man in many ways, obviously, but still an extension of what we have.
Okay, let's vote on this item. Madam Clerk, can we vote on it, then?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
I'm not going to City Hall on the first day. I'm telling you, pot holes and shit.
Item 14. It was held special by Mr. Rosendahl. He's now fine on it. Let's open the roll.
Mrs. President, for item 14, for the record, a substitute motion has been circulated.
Okay, so let's vote on the substitute motion. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now, let's vote on item 5.
Item 5 was already voted on, Mr. President. At this time, if you wish to vote, to send items 5, 11, and 14 urgent forthwith, 10 votes required.
Yes, please do that. Mr. Reyes, I'm gonna get right with you. Can we take up the ordinances? Well, first, let's vote on reconsideration for the item that Mr. Krikorian brought up.
Excuse me, Mr. President. First, council should vote on sending items 5, 11, and 14 urgent forthwith.
Well, can we lump them all together and do that?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, they're urgent forthwith. Now, let's vote on reconsideration of the Krikorian request, which I believe was item 30 on... Was it 32 on Wednesday's agenda? So, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes. Now, that item is before council for voting?
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now, we're gonna take up item 22. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Cornfield Royal Civic Plan allows us to revisit areas that have not been recognized in their current state, in their zoning and planning policies and practices, especially with rail stations emerging throughout the city to promote a transit-oriented district. We have flexible parking requirements, lead-based, environmentally friendly. This is a very important example of how we can move in the future, and I thank you for your support.
Okay, Madam Clerk, members, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open up the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
And all of the items, can we just send them forthwith? Mr. Zine.
Mr. President, I have an introduction.
Okay, go right ahead.
An air commercial airline pilot who's joining us today for my final day here in council, who has not had opportunity to come to city council to see us represent the people of Los Angeles. But I want to introduce my son, Eric Zine, who's here today. Eric Zine, take a bow. And a familiar face that's been in council many times, Sergeant Christopher Zine, Los Angeles Police Department, my other son, Christopher Zine, Eric Zine, joining us today on our final day here at city council. Thank you.
Let's get a picture.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, would you like to reconsider item 7, the ordinance?
Yes, let's do that. Let's vote on reconsideration of item 7. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes. Now, the item is before council for voting?
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now, let's do item 8. John Walsh, Arnold Sacks. William Ernest Schinnerneck, or something, maybe not even close to that. On item 8.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, speaking on item 8. This concerns wind power. Now, I'm all for wind power and I despise nuclear power. But we now have a deal where hucksters, wind hucksters, green hucksters, are selling power directly to DWP. Now, they say anybody can do it, but your average home doesn't have enough on their roof, and the state doesn't allow them, and the city doesn't allow them, to put enough green up there to produce solar power so that the average person can sell to the DWP. So, only favored companies like Manzana Wind and other green companies will be able to make a fortune. And if you have a home out there, they'll prevent you from putting up any kind of solar
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. You're purchasing 39 megawatts of renewable wind power capacity, and you just entered into a contract to sell renewable energy to Anaheim. So, is this a plus-minus for the city? Because I don't believe your purchasing is covering what you're selling. So, why couldn't Anaheim buy this wind power and you not? Why are you buying wind power and previously signing a contract to sell energy to another city? It doesn't make sense that you would be giving up a resource and then turning around and going out to have to buy the same resource. But you know what? It only makes sense around this horseshoe.
Okay, come forward, sir.
I'm William Schonewerk. Just Wednesday, I gave this poster on solar energy storage at the Massive Energy Storage Conference down by John Wayne Airport. The problem is, I made this poster from a drawing that I made 40 years ago. As best I could tell from looking at the stuff in the conference, there is essentially no chance of significant utility-grade storage anywhere, ever. And of course, the whole plan of having renewable energy is to phase out fossil fuel and nuclear. But if you don't have storage, you'll end up, no matter what happens, 2/3 of your energy is gonna be fossil and nuclear. So, we basically are spending money on something that will not achieve its ultimate goal.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, Madam Clerk, we have some items again from Wednesday's agenda that... There's a request that they be reconsidered. I think one would be item 35 from Wednesday, item 70, and it looks like a Council File And I can't make out what the last one is. Did I confuse you? Okay, there are... There were three items on Wednesday's... Two items, I'm sorry. I confused you, giving you the file. Two items from Wednesday, item 35 and item 70. They were on this past Wednesday's agenda. So, I'm gonna ask that we can reconsider those items and then act on them. So, can we open the roll? Or do you need to say something, Madam Clerk? Then, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now, what item is the Casden Project? I got another vote on that. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, now, item 20. Mr. Corretts, we're gonna go to your item. Item 20, I'll let you open. There are cards on the item, and I will come up with an appropriate time to have a hearing.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've had considerable community discussion of this issue. It's been difficult. It's been cut back dramatically, and it is now before us. I'd like to ask the city attorney whether I need to read this motion into the record or whether we can just pass it out. I'll do whichever one is appropriate.
It should be passed out, and if you could read the gist of it for the public certification, that would be helpful.
Okay, so, my apologies to the Council President, because I'm sure this will go beyond my allotted time, but I'll read the motion. I therefore move the Los Angeles City Council... I therefore move the Los Angeles City Council certify that the city council is reviewed and considered the EIR, ENV-2008-3989-EIR, SCH-2009061041, including the accompanying mitigation measures, and adopt the related environmental findings, the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and the statement of overriding considerations as the environmental clearance of the project. Find number one, the EIR for the Casden-Sapulveda Project, which includes the draft EIR and the final EIR, has been completed in compliance with California SEQA, Public Resources Code Section 21000, et cetera, and the State and City of Los Angeles SEQA Guidelines. The project's EIR was presented to the Los Angeles City Planning Commission as a recommending body of the lead agency, and the City Planning Commission reviewed and considered the information contained in the EIR prior to recommending the project for approval, as well as all other information in the record of proceedings on this matter. Three, the project's EIR represents the independent judgment analysis of the lead agency. Am I able to stop there, or do I need to read the entire section?
If you could just read the moving clause possibly, and then...
Well, that's part of the moving clause. Do I need... The entire moving clause is two pages.
Mr. City Attorney, you want to advise?
That was the findings. Do I need to read the entirety, or will that do and the rest in writing? Okay. Resolve to deny the appeals filed by, one, Scott Diamond on behalf of the Beverlywood Homes Association, Representative Alex DeGood, Jeffers, Mangles, Butler, Mitchell, of the entire determination of the Los Angeles City Planning Commission, LACPC; two, Fix the City Incorporated, Representative Beverly Grossman Palmer, of part of the determination of the LACPC; and, three, Barbara Brody on behalf of the Westwood South of Santa Monica Boulevard Homeowners Association, the Westwood Homeowners Association, and the Beverlywood Homes Association, of the entire determination of the LACPC. Adopt the resolution approving the general plan amendment from the light manufacturing land use designation to the community commercial land use designation for the property located at 11122 West Pico Boulevard and 2431-2441 South Sapulveda Boulevard. Present and adopt the ordinance for zone change from M2-1-0 to TQC2-1-0 for the property located at 11122 West Pico Boulevard and 2431-2441 South Sapulveda Boulevard. Disapprove a general plan amendment from the light manufacturing land use designation to the community commercial land use designation, a zone change from M2-1-0 to C2-1-0, and a height district change from height district 1XL to height district 1 for the MTA property located at 11201 and 11217 West Exposition Boulevard. Disapprove a general plan amendment for the add area located at 11110 and 11200 and 11240 and 11250 and 1160 West Pico Boulevard. Disapprove... Wait. Excuse me. Approve a density bonus to permit a floor area ratio of 3 to 1 located at 11122 West Pico Boulevard and 2431-2441 South Sapulveda Boulevard. Approve a conditional use permit... A conditional use to permit the off-site sale of alcohol for two retail establishments. Approve the site plan review. Approve the revised conditions of approval contained in the Department of City Planning's memo dated June 26, 2013. Adopt the findings of the City Planning Commission as the city finds they are sufficient to support the project as well. Clarify that the transportation mitigation program shall also include... Provide up to 100,000 at the West Los Angeles Traffic Improvement Mitigation Program for a traffic signal on Sapulveda Boulevard at either Pearl Street or Richland Avenue per approval of the Department of Transportation. Require 24-month period for the 75 first-come-first-served passes in lieu of the current 36-month period. Cast into work with BOE to ensure street improvements and paving of Pico-Sapulveda area. The project is to input a minimum of 5,000 square feet of neighborhood serving commercial, not to exceed 15,000 square feet. Due to the mandate of neighborhood serving commercial, public restroom shall be provided as a part of the project. Advise the applicant that pursuant to California State Public Resources Code Section 21081-6. The city shall monitor or acquire evidence that mitigation conditions are implemented and maintained throughout the life of the project, and the city may require any necessary fees to cover the cost of such monitoring. And advise the applicant that pursuant to the State Fish and Game Code Section 711.4, a fish and game and/or certificate of game exemption is now required to be submitted to the county clerk prior to or concurrent with the environmental novices and determination parentheses NOD, close parentheses filing.
Are you satisfied, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes.
Okay.
I can read it again if you want.
No, no. No. This is what I want to do, Paul. We have a bunch of people that are here for it, and a bunch that are here against it. What I'm going to do is I'm going to do a hearing for the no side of 15 minutes, one minute per person, and the yes kid, 15 minutes, one person per minute. We'll start out with the no's, and if your name isn't called, your name will be put in the record. So let's start off with Michael Millman, followed by, I think it's Mary Sagas, followed by Ben Resnick.
Yes, Michael Millman, Mar Vista. Since I only have one minute, I am a big, big believer in compromise. I'm a trial lawyer, that's why they brought me up from Mar Vista to be with the coalition. As long as they keep the trip count as promised, and as long as they don't invade into those side streets east of Sapulveda, and it's not going to be wall-to-wall traffic on those side streets, taking away the private streets from neighbors, I'm on board. I bought in. I like the compromise because it came from neighbors meeting the developers bare-knuckle, really tough, and the one thing we wanted was public service and public values. Thank you very much for the compromise and the leadership from CD 5 and 11.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Mary Singus. I'm a resident of Mar Vista, and I just want to put my voice into the... The plan that's originally filed is way too big, too many exceptions, and we have to live in the neighborhood. We invite you all to join us because it's a lovely neighborhood, but we need to get around a little bit. So I'll go on to the next person.
Thank you very much. Mr. Resnick.
Good morning, Ben Resnick with Jeffers, Mangles, Butler, and Mitchell. I represent Beverlywood Homes Association, which is 1,350 homes in Beverlywood community that has filed an appeal. We are an appellant. They are an appellant in this case, and the concerns raised with this project are the fact that the project started with, including land that did not belong to the developer, which created a massive project. It's being called the Reduced Project, but Beverlywood Homes does not see it as reduced because in reality, this is a maximum allowable project under the property owned by the developer. There are still six significantly impacted intersections which cannot be mitigated, and the statement of overriding considerations to ignore all those impacts has no basis in fact, is no reason. What is so special about the project that warrants creating six impacted intersections that cannot be mitigated? Beverlywood Homes, as the appellant, therefore, is concerned still with this project as it's currently contemplated.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Just for the record...
Thank you. You want to finish that thought, as an appellant?
Yeah, just as an appellant, in this case, I think that they would be entitled to more than one minute on the project that's almost 600,000 square feet. Thank you.
Well, sir, we did have quite a bit of time for you during committee as well. So thank you so much. Martin Rubin. Martin Rubin. Melissa Stoller. Sharon Cummins.
I live in Mar Vista, one block from the 405, less than a mile from this project. I'm already dealing with total traffic gridlock with cars cutting through my residential area. I would like an actual study done of what will be the implications of the replanned project, and I would like a hearing held in my community, not out in the valley. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
Hi, Sharon Cummins, Chair of Mar Vista Community Council. I want to clarify, make sure everyone understands our letter. We support, in concept, a reduced project based on the cement factory. We never supported the massive project based on the cement factory plus metro, and we never supported the CPC version of said project, even if we could figure out what they did, which we couldn't do because they were on and off record so frequently. We think that downsizing it from 12,000 some trips to 3,000 is a good thing, and we would encourage that solution. Thank you.
Okay. Martin Rubin, one more time. Martin Rubin, are you here? Okay, well, keep moving. Danny Snyder. Danny Snyder, come on up. All right. Barbara Brody. Barbara, you're here? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes and council. My name is Barbara Brody. I'm here representing Westwood South of Santa Monica Boulevard Homeowners Association and Westwood Homeowners Association. We are appellants in the appeals presented before you. You have today before you a very large project on your agenda today. You're being asked to approve a project whose site plan was never seen by the CPC, was never seen by the Plum Committee, and probably has never been seen by most of the council members here today. We only received it yesterday morning. We haven't actually received a site plan, I stand corrected. It's unfortunate that the clock has run out on this council's consideration of this project, but that doesn't mean that you should give it your blessings and pass on your authority to the Director of Planning and the Urban Design Studio. They don't have the power to make those kinds of decisions. That rests in this council. We don't know what the traffic mitigations are for this project. We have not been given mitigations or conditions to protect our communities and address the problems that this project may create.
Thank you, ma'am.
This is not a project of overriding conditions. It's overwhelming conditions.
Thank you, ma'am. Stuart Chandler. Followed by Terry Tippett, I believe.
Just me, just me.
Please, sir.
I'm a resident of Mar Vista, and I'm going to... I'm just going to tell you my experience with the traffic right now, before this monster is going to get unloaded on us. Ohio is completely impassable. Santa Monica is impossible between 3 o'clock and 7 o'clock in the evening, and it takes about 20 to 25 minutes sometimes to go from Colby to Sapulveda to get a meal at Baja Fresh right now. What's going to happen when you put 10 stories of more apartments, no buses? It's impossible to mitigate it. There'll be no parking. It's absolutely impossible. This behemoth should not be unloaded on my community, and I'm telling you, it's not going to stop here. It's not going to stop here. Mark me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Yes, Martin Rubin, President Northwestdale Neighborhood Association. Yes, I think basically, I just want to say that all the community groups have been very cooperative, responsible, and desirous of making this project work the best for the area and the city, and that the process, and it's been pointed out, doesn't really avail itself to have this be looked at the way it needs to be looked at. I really urge the council to consider that these developments need to have a closer look so that it can maximize the benefits for the whole city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Terry Tippett.
Terry Tippett, representing Westwood-HOA, where the homeowner association blocks south and a block east of the proposed project. I did not check no, so I don't know if you're still going in that order or not. I checked general comments. But anyway, this project has come down that was originally proposed, but it's coming down to what I saw in 2007. We're working with the developer and with the council office, and we know that this is a work in progress. What you're seeing today is not the finished project. Like Barbara said, we haven't really seen much, but we're hoping that we can all work together to mitigate the impacts that are going to happen in our neighborhood with the train as well, and know that this is only the first of many TODs that's going to come within that small area. So I hope no will all be seeing each other again.
Thank you, ma'am. Lillian Laskin. Lillian Laskin. And then Steve San. Good day, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Lillian Laskin, founding member of the West Side Progressives and a 40-year resident of that area called Mar Vista. When we were given this EIR by Casden last fall, it was based on six acres, which would include a big box store and supermarket. We found out about a week ago that it's only four acres, and that as a big favor, Casden would drop the big box store. We really think that his intention was to build an excessive amount of dwelling units that far exceed even what Playa Vista has, and that he will set a precedent for such high density in our neighborhood that this will perpetuate an unlivable situation. The project you're getting today is without any EIR, any details, any community input. I urge you to postpone it so that we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning, council members. Steve San, Chair of the Westwood Community Council, for the record. I just want to address the issue of really the process because going forward, we have a new council on Monday and a new mayor, and I know that the zoning code is going to be looked at. I just want to point out the process that was involved here. We had a developer that proposed on this corner of Pico and Sapulveda a 17-story project. I contrast that to what this council approved on the corner of Wilshire and Vermont, a subway station, a heavy rail station on the most heavily-traveled corridor, Wilshire. There, the council approved six stories of residential over one level of retail, and yet on this corner of Pico and Sapulveda, the developer came in and asked for not seven, but 17 stories. So to hear it referenced that it's now been brought down to 10 is really a false comparison because the entire process, asking for 17 stories on a corner that clearly couldn't support it, is really absurd. So I'm hopeful that as the zoning code revisions go forward, that this entire game that the developers force the community to play will be ended. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have covered... Okay. Mr. Resnick, the appellant, on record. Would you like another minute? Is that a yea or a nay? It'll be historical if you say nay. This truly is my last day in council, the day Ben Resnick says, "No, I don't need another minute." We're going to miss you. Charge another minute.
Going to miss you, eh? Ben Resnick again. Yes, the appellant is Beverlywood Homes Association. As I said, it's 1,350 homes in the West Side, and its main concern is the process, I think, with which the project came to here. What Steve San just referred to, 17 stories, the reason that project was applied that way is that it included land owned by the MTA. So the MTA's land was used to, if you will, bootstrap a huge project onto this developer's property. When we said that was not legal and wrote letters to that effect, that portion was removed, and that's being called the Reduced Project. So it's not reduced. What it is, is it's a maximum allowable project on the land, the four acres owned by this developer, absolute maximum allowed. And Beverlywood is quite concerned that this is a pattern that will be carried out. You've got impacted intersections that cannot be mitigated, and therefore will be ignored. Thank you.
Mr. Resnick. Mr. Resnick. Good to hear from you, sir. We do have other appellants on record. We want to make sure that you're satisfied in your presentation, given you had one minute. We did this for the appellants in committee, but we are being suggested and advised that if there are other appellants on the record who'd like to come forward.
Mr. Reyes, Barbara Brody, again, for Westwood South and Westwood Homeowners. You'll notice, I don't think you have a redline copy of conditions, but we have had no formal talks to discuss mitigations or conditions on this project, and very ironically so, the language in the conditions now for a transit-oriented project talk about carpooling and ride-sharing. They don't talk about how to improve and benefit from and create value from the Expo line. We have a lot of concerns about a transit center and the purposes that a transit center could have in connecting all the different transit modes that pass by that location. That hasn't been addressed yet. Mitigations haven't been addressed yet. So we have a lot of work to do yet, and we don't understand how the process will work if this project is approved today as it is.
Thank you, Ms. Brody.
Thank you.
Are there any other appellants that would like to come to the microphone? Saying none. We will now move into the folks who submitted cards where they marked "for the proposal." The next speaker would be Jay Handel, followed by Ron Miller.
Yes, good afternoon. Jay Handel, Chair of the West LA Neighborhood Council. Having worked with 19 different community groups over the last week to try and bring this project into a size and scope that's workable for the community, I'm happy to say that working with the developer and working with CD5, we were able to bring this project down from 12,000 car trips to 3,000 car trips, down to 595 total units, eliminating a box store with 2,800 car trips, and down to only 15,000 square feet of commercial versus 160,000 square feet. The elimination of the Expo property, as you've heard, is really important, because now Expo can do anything they need to do to bring a transit center there and make sure it happens, and it's not the responsibility of the developer. This project, as negotiated by the community, along with the community benefits that you'll see in your package, those benefits were submitted to our group, was compiled, given to the developer, and agreed to by the developer. We support this 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ron Miller?
Morning, councilmen. My name's Ron Miller. I'm Executive Secretary of the Los Angeles Building and Construction Trades Council. We represent 140,000 craftsmen and women within 52 affiliated local unions. We strongly support the CASD West LA project and urge you to approve it today. This project's been through many gyrations. Developers made great efforts to work with the community and with Councilman Carrats, who represents this neighborhood. CASD West LA has a vision for LA's future. More than 26,000 people use the Expo line each weekday. That's thousands of cars that are not on our roads. That's less pollution and less traffic. This is an opportunity we must take to reach the full potential of the Expo line, and we need to have housing near it. CASD West will be built under an agreement with the Building Trades and create 1,600 jobs. Please support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Rachel Carviallo, followed by Cliff Smithy.
Good afternoon, City Council. I'm here representing Affordable Living for the Aging, a nonprofit organization that helps low-income seniors find housing resources. We urge you to support this project because of the 67 much-needed affordable senior housing units that will give low-income older adults an opportunity to live in an area of the city with amenities and services, and just in a really nice neighborhood that they wouldn't otherwise have access to. So we urge you to support this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Cliff Smith. I'm the Business Manager for Roofers and Waterproofers Union Local 36. We strongly urge you to support this project today. Not only is it a good project for the community, it will provide 1,600 career-based construction jobs, which provide much-needed help to our dismal employment situation in this community, provides stability to our communities. It's good all the way around. We strongly urge you to support this project today. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker?
I'm Danny Snyder. I understand my name was called while we were with Bill.
You know you're on the other side, though, right?
Yeah.
So let's be clear to the audience. Do you want to speak?
I would like just a second.
Please.
And I just wanted to simply say that it's time to do real transit corridor-type work, and this doesn't quite fit that character.
Okay.
There's more that needs to be done.
Thank you, sir. Greg Lewis. Eddie Penya. Aaron Smith. You're welcome to form a line behind the speaker. Evelyn Alexander.
Hi, I'm Greg Lewis, Business Agent for Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Local 761. We represent about 1,100 members that live and work in the area, and we still suffer from very high unemployment rates, and this job just seems to really make sense for the area, and it'll provide a lot of good opportunities for our apprenticeship, which is the future of our trade, and we just strongly encourage you to pass this project today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, come on up.
Eddie Penya with the Heat and Frost Insulators Local 5 and Fire Stoppers. Council members, I'd like to urge you to move forward with this project, and I'd like to speak up for Local 5 and the importance of it being a union project 100%. We are the energy conservation specialists in the trade for over 100 years, and also in life safety. The importance of life safety in a major project like this, especially with 70 senior facilities and 638 units total, the fire stop and life safety is of the utmost importance for life safety and property protection. And also, the insulation must be done properly through a union shop, so you have the proper energy conservation. You are saving money in the unit as it goes. Once again, I urge you for a proper build and union support. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. Evelyn Jerome Alexander here, representing FAST, Fixing Angelino Stuck in Traffic. We're a nonprofit organization that supports real solutions that help people get out of their cars and use public transit. Let me tell you what we like about this proposal. There's a mobility hub. CASD has invested in a mobility hub, so that's bike share, car share, secure bike parking, and this is what helps people get to transit and actually use it. There's wayfinding signage for people shopping on the property but who don't live there. There will be directions to get to the Expo line. There's bus shuttle layover parking. There's safe-grade separated access to the Expo line for residents and shoppers. This is a smart development that will help Westsiders make better use of the Expo line and the larger transit network. We thank CASD for their responsiveness, and thank you, Mr. Carrats, for your leadership in bringing the community together and finding a solution for this property that will work. Thank you.
Thank you. Randall Curtis. Spencer Villasenor. Sasha Stevenson. Ryan Lawrence, please come on up.
Good morning. I'm the Policy Coordinator at West Angeles Community Development Corporation, and we have a strong history of providing affordable senior housing and development projects in South Los Angeles. We support the CASD project because of the dire need for affordable housing, especially for seniors in the city of Los Angeles, along with the availability of quality jobs that will be created and the tax revenue that the project will generate for this city. This is a great development for West Los Angeles, and along with the Department of City Planning and the Planning Commission, West Angeles CDC supports the CASD project.
Type your name, please, for the record.
Randall Curtis.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, Spencer Villasenor. I would like to voice my support for CASD West LA. I think it's imperative that we, and you all, as a forward-moving city, understand how important projects like this are for the future of Los Angeles. Our focus needs to be on transit-oriented developments such as this, supporting smart and effective density along high-volume rail and bus lines. There's been much opposition to the project, and the developers have heard and made adjustments. Number of residential units has been reduced, the scale and size of all buildings have been reduced, and even the prospective anchor tenants are now being let go so as to make everybody happy. There is lots of support, however. Business groups and chambers of commerce support it, unions and others seeking work support it, public transportation and environmental advocacy groups, urban planners, and smart everyday people who care about improving our way of life and avoiding traffic in the city support it as well. Not only will this project create jobs and increase use of public transportation, but it will also bring a new diverse mix of cultures to the area, which, let's not forget, is currently a cement plant. Please support this project. It's the right type of development at the right time for Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Sasha Stevenson. I went to high school in Mar Vista, and I now attend Johns Hopkins University in Maryland. I have also lived in Los Angeles for all of my childhood. I have long been looking forward to the completion of the Expo line, because I believe it'll help alleviate pressure on our main east-west through fairs. We have already seen benefits of the light rail since its opening in spring. Ridership has also gone up every month. What makes it work is the ability to easily travel back and forth between the West Side and downtown, two of our primary locations for which people work and congregate in the city. Projects like CASD's are necessary if we want to fulfill the maximum potential of the Expo line. There may be some immediate gridlock in these immediate intersections, but that has already been the case. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
How's it going? Ryan Lawrence. Now that we've built the Expo line Phase 1 and started work on Phase 2, it's time to properly develop around it. And yes, by development, I mean densely populated residential communities with a means to live, work, shop, and travel via public transit all in one location. Some people are acting as if this is a novel and scary idea, but it's done successfully in cities all around the world. The station at exposition in Sepulveda needs a real transit-oriented development to make it truly successful. A grocery store, a large retailer, and smaller neighborhood-serving retail uses are all great fits if we build enough housing to support them. A cement plant next to an Expo station does not work. Neither does a parking lot or a few levels of office. I hope the city will have the guts to ignore the naysayers and make the right decision to support this development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next group of speakers, Jeff Gold, Vicky Moore, Rob Mastiff, I believe, would like to come on up. James Hansen. So Jeff Gold, are you here? Jeff Gold. I believe it's Victoria Moore.
Yes.
Rob Nesbit. James Hansen, please come on up. Please, ma'am.
My name is Victoria Moore, and I'm a citizen of South Central Los Angeles and a regular Expo rider. I'd also like to support this project, because I feel it will be good for the community, both South Central and West LA, because it will give citizens from that part of the city a chance to come to the other part of the city and be exposed to new things. And also, it'll be great for the city as a whole, because it'll move us in more of a modern direction. Please, I urge you to support this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
My name is James Hansen. I live in Pasadena, California. I take the train everywhere in Los Angeles. I love the trains that we have here. I want high-density transit-oriented developments all over the city of Los Angeles and beyond. If people are concerned about traffic mitigation, they need to get on the train, get out of their cars, start walking around, learn to ride a bike, do something, and your life will change dramatically. Please vote yes on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Rob Nesbit. I'm a resident of downtown LA since 1984 and have seen tremendous change there. Infill from approximately 10,000 inhabitants in 2002 up to around 52,000 today, and probably going on to somewhere between 150 and 200,000 if things keep going. Regarding the traffic, in the 80s, there was a lot of traffic, and of course, there's a lot of traffic. Now, there's more traffic, but they did it with the LA Live Staples Center. They did a lot of traffic mitigation, and as you probably know, they're planning to put a football stadium in there now, too, so it accommodates everything, but traffic is not bad. It's heavy all over LA, and that's the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Ronald Adams, President and CEO of West Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the West Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce, I would like to voice our support for the proposed project near the intersection of Pico and Sepulveda. We believe that a mixed-use residential-retail project adjacent to the Expo line Sepulveda Station would be a great benefit to the West LA community. We're disappointed to hear that the project will no longer have a grocery store as the area desperately needs one. One of the missions of the West Los Angeles Chamber is to create an environment that promotes business, thereby strengthening the community. We believe that this project will do just that. With around 1,000 new residents and hundreds of permanent, much-needed jobs generated, there will be a high influx of new customers to shop at the existing retailers and eat at the local restaurants in the area. In these tough economic times, we believe this investment in our community is an opportunity to make a real positive difference on the West Side. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker, and that completes our time, is Janet Garstang. Janet, as Janet comes up, I'll read the rest of the speakers for the record. For the record, we have here Eric Anthony, Patty Schur, Shaw, I believe, Ron Adams, Shula Midalas, Jonathan Weiss, Adolf Navarro, Felix Bruce, Piedmont Brown, Howard Katz, Kevin Bass, and Martin Rodriguez. So you're our last speaker, and all the names I just called will be in here for the record. You're our last speaker. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Janet Garstang. I'm speaking as a private citizen. I live extremely close to the Expo line and proposed CASD project. I live two blocks away, so closer than anyone else that has spoken, and I am speaking as a private citizen. I want to go on record as supporting the project. I also do want to express that I am very disappointed to see the changes in the project, the retail space going down to between 5,000 and 15,000 feet. I think we're missing a huge opportunity, a compromise that makes everyone happy so we can move forward is a good thing, but I think that this was a very forward-thinking development that would have been a start, a small start, but a start in solving our overwhelming traffic woes that we have on the West Side and all through LA, and by having taken away the retail component, no longer can people live there and not have cars.
Thank you, Ms. Garstang.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, and that concludes our public comment. All the names I've read were for the record. Councilman Carrats?
Yes, if we could have some representatives from planning come to the table, that would be a good thing.
Okay, we can have the planning staff come to the table, please.
[inaudible] public testimony is over.
Sir, public testimony is over.
A couple of questions. One on the record, was the scope of this revised project captured within the scope of the environmental analysis?
Thank you, Councilman Lisa Weber, Deputy Director with the Department of City Planning, for the record. Yes, the SEQA analysis, a full draft environmental impact report and final EIR, was prepared for this project, and it did analyze a far greater project and scope with both additional commercial square footage and residential unit count beyond the reduced revised project that's come before the council today. So we have fully covered all of our SEQA requirements at this time.
Okay, and planning reviewed the revised project. Are there any clarifications that need to be made? I know I'm aware of a couple, so what have you?
Yes, staff did review the revised project and did prepare a memorandum dated June 26. In that memorandum, we provide new statement of overriding considerations, as well as conditions of approval related to the Q conditions, the conditional use, and the site conditions of approval related to the Q conditions, the conditional use, and the site plan review. Condition number six, which deals with building height, we are recommending that we alter to further describe the height of the podium. The condition, as it reads now, is limited to just the height of the residential towers. So as part of clarification, we would like to revise the second to last sentence in the condition to read as follows. "No building or structure on the subject site shall exceed the height limits of six stories or 85 feet, whichever is higher above said baseline, or in the case of podium construction, above said podium, which shall itself not exceed 35 feet above said baseline, except for the westernmost building, which shall not exceed 10 stories or 110 feet, whichever is higher above said baseline, or in the case of podium construction, above said podium."
And I'll amend my motion to include that as well. I don't know if the clerk got that, but that will be my amendment. I also need to change one word in Condition 38, which says, "Prior to the issuance of any building permit, the applicant will be required to install air quality systems, et cetera." They actually, that would be incorrect. It should be, "Prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy permit." So if we could make that one change. Other than that, I think this is a good compromise. Cuts the project back substantially, cuts the impacts back very dramatically as a result of our working with numerous community groups, and I ask for your eye vote on this.
Okay, see no one else on the queue? Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That ordinance will be held over one week until July 23 for a second reading.
Thank you very much. Okay, item six, we'll send urgent forthwith.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Council should vote for the urgent forthwith. 10 votes required.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that moves on as an urgent. So at this time, Madam Clerk, I think we're going to pause this meeting and we can transition to the special meeting.
Okay, we call the roll. Alcon Busciano, Ingrid Garcia, Correia, LaBange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Zion, Westing, 11 members. President, a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, for the start of business. Councilor Rosenthal.
Yes, just as we voted on it, but for those who don't know, the project, the CASD project, which the collaboration...
I'm sorry, we're in a special meeting right now.
Did we vote on that?
Yes. There was a vote on it.
Okay, well, if you get out of the special meeting for one second, I'd like to make a statement.
Mr. Attorney?
Unless it were reconsidered when we come back. It's possible. But right now during a special meeting, we're going to talk about what's on the special meeting, Janet.
Okay, anyhow, God bless everybody here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rosenthal. Okay. So first order of business on the special meeting?
Items 24 and 25 are items which public hearings have been held. A motion is required for item 24 since that item was submitted without recommendation by the Public Safety Committee, and item 25, amended motion, has been circulated.
Okay. Members, any specials? Okay, so let's open the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. President. I believe item 24 is being held, and there's cards on item 25.
So we'll go to each one then. Let's just go to item 24.
Okay.
Madam Clerk?
For item 24, a motion is required.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead and receive and file this now, but go ahead and speak to it for a moment. So first, need a second for the receive and file. And then with that, the idea on this is we were all concerned about staffing levels with the 11 ambulances and moving the 10th man. We had a hearing on this this morning. If the fire chief, if we could, just have him come to the table for a moment, and we can be very quick about this. The idea is that in this motion is we would put the money back into the department so on July 1, we can maintain the 10th man as well as the 11 staff members, the 11 ambulances as well. And we looked at that issue, since the department is funded for the fiscal year, going ahead and doing this, we all would know and realize that this would cause, without the transfer, either one of two options. One, a reduction of that 10th man is a possibility, or two, if they continue doing so, would create a deficit running forward, moving forward, that we could look at in a financial status report. But the idea of putting that off for an FSR, not funding it now, we would want the commitment from the fire department that we'd go ahead and continue with the 10th man, we'd go ahead and continue with the staffing of the ambulances. We know full well that we would run that deficit, but in that period of time, before that first FSR comes out, that the fire department would have the opportunity to come back to public safety and Budget and Finance Committee, as well as each council member individually on their specific districts, to talk about where response times are, to talk about what's going on with the public safety plan for the department as well, to talk about the effects of what's happening with those proposed changes, if they were to occur, if we didn't fund them, if an FSR, but knowing full well that all we're simply doing is asking that they be maintained as is status quo. But we know that since they weren't funded in that vein in the budget, that the department would be absorbing that in the first quarter of the fiscal year. It would come back in an FSR, but it'd give us that time without having any significant changes within the department, to ask those questions, go through that dialogue, as well as the ability to have, and we have a new mayor on board as well, to start diving deep into that and go through and have those briefings. So if we could, and that's the commitment we're looking for, but Chief, if you can highlight anything on that as well.
Absolutely, Councilman Englander. The department staffed the 11 ambulances on May 5, and since then, the reconfiguration is doing exactly what we anticipated. Our light force resources are available more often to respond to fire calls and forcible entry calls. The ambulances are responding. We have more availability of ambulances out in the city of Los Angeles, so we're providing a better level of service. We have also, with the councils giving us the additional funding for last fiscal year, the fiscal year we're in now, excuse me, we've been able to keep those 22 light forces staffed at six persons. You do have a commitment from me to continue to staff those unfunded positions, utilizing money within our budget, as we continue to report out to Public Safety, Budget and Finance, and this council on the impact of reducing those light force, the staffing from six to five. But the moving the positions to the ambulances has been effective for us.
Okay, so...
Councilmember, I think we'll look at our clock.
Okay, I'll come back to it if I need to add more time.
Please, thank you. Councilor Correia.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Chief. I appreciate your being here to make that commitment to us. For clarification, the import of my motion was exactly that. It was not to provide additional funding. In fact, it would not have provided any additional funding. We did that in this fiscal quarter, of course, but going forward, the import of the motion was to preserve the current staffing on the truck companies and still be able to maintain the ambulance service. And so your commitment here achieves the objective that I was trying to achieve, and so I'm happy to go ahead and support receiving and filing the motion on that understanding and based on that commitment. So thank you, Chief, very much. Thank you, Mr. Englander, for bringing it forward today, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Parks and Councilor LaBange.
Thank you very much. I just want to understand, when this came up before in council and we approved extra funding in the fiscal year, your budget was in deficit at that time without running this through the year, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so with the new budget July 1, are you in a position to absorb this cost? Because it runs about $30,000 a day.
That's correct, sir. This will, as Councilman Englander pointed out, we will be running at a deficit.
Okay, but I mean, but you ran at a deficit last year without this.
Yes, sir.
So in this current year budget to run both of them without extra funding, then we know the outcome, you'll be in deficit on FSR 1, 2, and 3 if funding isn't coming.
Correct, sir.
Okay, have we had any tragedies that have occurred in the time you've changed the system as far as putting more people on paramedics?
No, sir, we haven't, but we haven't reduced the staffing on the truck companies yet because of the additional funding that was provided by the city council. So we're still running all of our task forces with six members.
Are our response times on paramedics coming down, or where are we on that?
Putting the 11 additional ambulances out there is improving response times. Yes, sir.
Have we had any of these, we were told during the last meeting, there were all these security and safety issues. Have we run across any of those as relates to firefighters on trucks or paramedics?
No, sir, we haven't, but again, we haven't reduced the staffing. We're just spending more money.
Okay, and then the other issue, are we, at the end of the fiscal year, are we up and down on fire deaths, fire loss of structures, cost of structures? Where are we on that?
We're down. We are down on fire loss in dollar amount. We're down on injuries and lower, below the national standard on both of those, and our fire fatalities is slightly up from last year, but we're still doing, trending very well on national averages.
Colleagues, I just have a concern. I think we're putting the fire chief in a real pickle that we're asking him to absorb what we know he can't fund, and then to say, "Report on it and come back and tell us you can't fund it," because we know he was three to, I think, three to four million in the red last year before we imposed this on him. We gave him money for that, but we're not giving him money this year, but we're saying, "Keep both of these operations going." And so I just, and I think when I asked Mr. Correia in the last discussion, "Are we guaranteeing him funding?" He said, "No." And by the fact that it's gone through the budget process and you didn't get the funding, it's pretty clear it's not guaranteed. And we know that if you continue your operation as budgeted, you will have some form of a shortfall regardless. So to impose this $30,000 a day seems that we're asking you to do magic, which you're not able to do. And so I'm just concerned that you're being put in that situation to be in a shortfall even before July 1.
Yes, sir. It will be a challenge for the department. We'll continue to bring forward other options for both public safety and the city council to consider, ways that we can provide for that public safety firefighter safety and service delivery while attempting to remain within our budget.
I just hope people remember when you come in and say, "I'm in the shortfall," that it was created by this recommendation.
Yes, sir. The 22 positions on the light forces are unfunded, that we will be, continue to keep staffed.
Thank you.
Mr. LaBange, we're going to lose quorum.
I know, and I'll be very quick. You work magic every day. The fire department works magic every day. Mitch, you're working magic now. We've got to come up with magic in the future. Thank you. Vote yes.
Okay, Mitchell to close.
Yeah, just very quickly, and Mr. Parks, you're absolutely 100% correct. The difference between today and the last time this came is we're at the end of the fiscal year. So if you run out of cash flow, you're basically out of money. It's one thing to run a deficit in the beginning of the year, it's another to run at the end of the year. At the end of the year, if we don't make them whole, they've got to shut down completely. And so they couldn't, they wouldn't have been able to make payroll. In fact, the transfer didn't even occur for three days because the paperwork wasn't signed and the money wasn't put in the department. And so it's a very big difference, significant difference between, you know, knowing full well we're going to run into that deficit and have to deal with this issue at the beginning of the fiscal year than at the end of it. But thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on that. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now can you run through the other items that were in the special?
Items 26 through 34, items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. I'm calling item 26, which was called special by John Walsh. Mr. Walsh, item 26 of the special agenda, and again, members, we have serious quorum issues. Come on, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. And this concerns authorizing executive of, execution of seven quitclaim deeds for seven Los Angeles Department of Water and Power distribution easements. We're asking for a city attorney investigation. Quitclaims are very, very suspicious. So we're asking, this says exemption communication from the city attorney ordinance, first consideration relative to authorizing the execution of seven quitclaim deeds for seven Los Angeles Department of Water and Power distribution easements. It says none, there is no fiscal impact submitted by the city attorney. In fact, there is. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now we have item 25 that was held special by John Walsh. John Walsh, if you could please come forward on item 25.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This concerns Budget and Finance Committee report relative to restoring authority for vacant positions in the city attorney's office. We find out, and this was not an issue in the election, that there were 16 vacant positions, and there are now 16, that's about 20% of the city attorney. So let me explain to you what this means. It means when they don't hire the people, they have to go out and hire a private law firm, often people who have given them money. So, and in fact, as you know, when you hire a private law firm, it costs you three to four times as much as if you had filled a vacant position. So now after the election's over, suddenly they discover, when he comes in, HollywoodHighlands.org, 16 vacant positions.
Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now let's go to item 31 called special by John Walsh. Item 31 in the special, Mr. Walsh. I just haven't taken these yet.
Minute three. John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is another zombie CRA item. As you know, we destroyed the CRA last year, but it's not dead because of the Hollywood Integral Modal Information System grant. So in other words, this is a leftover contract. So what we have now are leftover contracts. Many of them have been canceled, and there are, I think, 35 of them before the courts throughout the state. This is to establish a grant of $1,682,000. Now, if we were to cancel this, that money would go back to the state and be used for schools, fire, et cetera. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Let's prepare to vote. Let's open, I don't have a card on you, Mr. Sacks. Come forward, though, I don't have a card. Come forward if you're going to speak, come right now. You said item 32. No, hold in, we'll get to that. Let us vote on this. Let's, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now come forward, Mr. Walsh. We're on item 32. Sacks, Mr. Sacks, come forward. We're on item 32.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sacks. Well, both of them actually are related to CRA funding, and both of them, I believe the CRA's basic tenant proposal is affordable housing. And yet, both of these items are for grants or funding for transportation issues. A and B. When you, when the governor proposed eliminating the CRA way back three years ago, the mayor mentioned $900 million worth of funding. We don't even know what the hell happened to that. Then through all the magical that occurs in city council... Then, through all the magical that occurs in city council, somewhere or other, there was like $400 million, give or take a few pennies, that was transferred around. Now, we're dealing with $1,600,000 and $1,600,000, $3.2 million out of over $400 million in CRA funding. That's quite a reduction in the money that was available for CRA projects. And this isn't even a CRA project that's directed towards housing. I believe there was a speaker on another item that talked about low-income housing. Isn't that the direction of the CRA was to be for low-income housing? And yet, both again, are these for transit enhancements for community projects. It's not as if Metro doesn't have any money. Well, they don't have, well, it's another story altogether. We don't know what they have. But, it's the use of CRA funding for the transportation when everyone on the council will tell you, and you just have to ask them, because we know how open and transparent they are, that we all are for affordable housing. We all need affordable housing in our districts. That's why we're spending this money on transportation issues. And it's not even issues. This is actually for enhancements to the streets. It's not like it's gonna provide more service. It's gonna provide enhancements to the streets.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Okay. Let's prepare to vote on that item. Members, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Now, let's move to item 34. John Walsh, please come forward on item 34.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is my favorite item of the day. This is minute 4. You passed a moratorium with great flourish. You will not cut into newly resurfaced streets in the city. No exceptions. Well, it makes sense. You don't spend millions of dollars resurfacing streets for a political opportunity for the mayor to get his face on television and then come back and tear up the street. Except, here you're doing it to allow the construction of utilities at one address, 210 East 53rd Street. So, the people, whoever is involved at 210 East 53rd Street, they are going to be the first to tear apart the streets that the mayor resurfaced for millions of dollars. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. Okay. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay. Now, we, we, oh, all of the special meeting items go forth with as well. Okay. If we could get to 29, where I have John Malloy. There's no name on this one. It just has business or organization, and it says Works. And then, there's somebody named Falcone. Go ahead, sir.
Hi. My name is John Malloy. I'm the Executive Director of Path Ventures, which is an organization which builds affordable housing, permanent supportive housing for the formerly homeless. And we're here in support of item 29. We think, we want to commend the department for helping to bring order to what was formerly a relatively chaotic process. Speaking on behalf of the Alliance of Nonprofit Housing Developers of Permanent Supportive Housing, we want to thank them for paying attention to our comments on the proposal. And also, to put in a plug for the real problem, which is that the pipeline list that they're talking about is 24 projects, whereas we wish we had the funding for 100. Thank you.
Okay. Next, please.
Daniel Falcone with McCormick Barrett Salazar, Mr. President, speaking in favor. I'll keep it short, recognizing the quorum issues and thank the department for presenting this and bringing it forward and ask for an I-vote.
I'm Chana Grace Works, and I urge you to please support this item. I want to applaud LHD for their efforts in making this truly an open process and endeavoring to engage the community. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on that. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay. Let's recess out of the special.
Excuse me, Mr. President, there's still items remaining in the special meeting that council needs to vote on or consider.
Okay. What did I neglect?
Council still has items 27, 28, 30, 35, and 35, 33, and 35.
No, there's cards on 35, John Walsh. 35 is closed session, is it not? Okay. Even though we're not voting on 35, I will afford Mr. Walsh the opportunity to speak.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is item 35. It is in closed session, that's right. And it concerns congregation Etchheim versus City of Los Angeles. Well, you know, challenging the city's denial of a conditional use permit and variance application to use residential property in Hancock Park for religious purposes. Now, my great-grandparent, grandfather Leo Berger was a Jew. His daughter married a Christian. We are 100% in favor of the Orthodox Jewish group's permission and their freedom to worship in Hancock Park. And we're tired of these irreligious Jews who don't want Jews to walk the streets of Hancock Park. We're asking Garcetti, who's sitting up there, who also is a Jew.
No, just stay on the subject.
The subject is Orthodox Jews have sued you because you will not let them walk the streets of Hancock Park at night or say their prayers. Because irreligious Jews say they are too noisy. HollywoodHighlands.org. Educate yourself on Judaism.
All right. Your, thank you. Your time is up. Let's vote on this item? No, wait, that's closed session. What is the next item, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, the remaining items are items 27, 28, 30, and 33 before council that can be voted on.
Okay. I don't have cards, so we can just vote on them?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay. Listen, lump all of them together, and we're gonna vote on them? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes. Item 28 is adopted as amended.
Okay. So, now, can we recess?
Mr. President, item 35 is a closed session item.
So, we're gonna refer item 35 back to budget and finance. Paul, I'm not gonna have time, so I'm gonna refer it back to Kocorian's, because we're gonna lose a quorum in a minute. And I'd like to at least have a quick chat with Mr. Zine. So, now that we're in the regular session.
Mr. President, you wish to adjourn the special?
Adjourn. Now, and put us back into the regular. Are you ready, Ms. Zine? In fact, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Garcetti, I know we have, we're probably gonna lose a quorum, but maybe you could address this, council? I think that that's, we'd be appreciative of that.
Mr. Garcetti.
Eric Garcetti.
I know Mr. Coretts wanted to get, well, there's 12 of us here, the vote on his item 2. Do you wanna reconsider that real quick and take that vote?
We're at 11.
All right, okay. Got it. All right. Well, with that, I just wanted to thank everybody. It's been 12 amazing years. My colleagues who I came in together with, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Zine. We were part of the class of 2001. I beat you by two weeks, so I always had seniority on you, because Jackie Goldberg's seat was open. But, the last 12 years have been the most tremendous 12 years of my life. I think everybody who has a moment in time to represent a body such as this feels that. I'm not gonna have any long words for today, but I just wanted to thank each of you and the council staff, whether it's the folks who kept us safe and kept the committees moving, I mean, the council moving, whether it's our clerks or our city attorney, or whether it's my colleagues and their staff. This has been a tremendous place of professionals, a place where first and foremost, a lot of people think the show is the work. The show is not the work. The show is important. People do need recognition for the things that they do in the community, the teams that win championships, the heroes that save lives, the musicians who travel representing us around the world. But, the work which we churn through every single day here, dozens upon dozens upon dozens of things that keep the city functioning, I couldn't have been more blessed to have been part of a representative body that taught me what democracy is about. And so, I just wanted to thank everybody. I will remember that. I hope as I become mayor, as the first mayor who's been a city council president, I'll always understand what the leadership of this council goes through. As somebody who's been a council member for 12 years, know that I will always understand what council members are going through and respect your roles that you play as we have these different powers. And most of all, thank you to the public, who takes time out of their day to be here, to testify, to take bus trips, to walk here, to get into a car, to figure out parking, to wait for hours to be heard for one little item. And thank you for allowing me to speak before a few of you. I have a park that's opening in a few minutes in East Hollywood. It's the 48th park in my district. It'll officially triple the number of parks that we have in the 13th council district from 16 to 48. That's the kind of work you can do here if you just put your nose to the grindstone. And I'm gonna continue doing that, but I guess I'll take this with me right now, and we'll call it a council career. Thank you, guys, so much. I love you all.
Thank you. Okay. Before we get to your item, Zine, could you read special one? It should be quick. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the LAPD has requested that council offer a reward for information leading to the arrest of suspects who shot at officers Tovar and Romero on June 25th at 4:30 a.m. outside the Wilshire area police station. Immediate action is required to capture the suspects for the safety of the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to government code section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Okay. Let's vote on the findings. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay. Now, let's vote on the actual item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay. That passes. Okay. Mr. Zine?
Yes, sir. Mr. President. Yes, sir.
Let me, it would appear that we're not going to have enough time to see, to have all this public hearing before we lose a quorum. So, if anybody wants to try to forfeit their time, that would be appreciated.
Mr. President, if I can interject, we have a number of folks here from different organizations representing the West San Fernando Valley. If we could have them come up as a group and maybe have a couple individuals speak on behalf of the cards to expedite this matter, I think that might work to bring them up as a group from the chamber, from the community, homeowners groups, et cetera. That might help.
Okay. Because what I will do is I will grant 10 minutes on this item, five, four, and five against, and we might be able to get this vote in. Okay, sir, if you could identify yourself and the individuals that are with you?
Yes, Larry Green. I'm Senior Vice President for Westfield. And with me today is a collection of people from the community, from labor, from business. We have a full community output here today in support of this item. Councilman, would you like me to say some remarks?
Well, why don't you, the groups that are here, the folks, just, real quick, and then, some remarks.
Come on, just introduce yourself.
These are the folks supporting.
My name is Rose Goldwater, and I was working with the developers of the Warner Center, and I was president of the chamber. I am a longtime resident, and I am totally for our village. We need the money. We need the village. We need the jobs. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So, if your position is yes, why don't you just state your name and say you're here in support? Come on.
Sean McCarthy. I'm with the United Chambers of Commerce of the San Fernando Valley. We represent 18 chambers in favor of the project.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Joanne Lippman, Conoga Park, West Hills Chamber of Commerce and a business in our community for 23 years. Yes.
In support of Nora Ross for the Valley Cultural Center and other nonprofits in the West Valley community.
Brad Rosenheim, representing the Warner Center Association. We're supportive.
Thank you.
Ed Crowe, published for the West High News. Fully supportive of project.
Hey, come on.
Diana Williams, CEO of the Willen Hills Tarzana Chamber of Commerce. We urge that you quickly get this project completed. Thank you.
Next.
Ken Phillips with the Valley Economic Alliance. We wholeheartedly support this, expediting of this project.
Thank you. Next.
Miguel Caderon. I work as a janitor at a shopping center on Westfield. I say yes.
Okay. Next.
Stuart Waldman, Valley Industry and Commerce Association, VICA. We strongly support this.
Stuart, come on, Ruben.
Ruben Gonzalez, LA Area Chamber of Commerce. We're fully in support of this.
Thank you. Next.
Good afternoon. Rachel Torres, Unite Here Local 11 Hotel and Food Service Workers Union. We proudly support the project.
Next.
Ron Miller, LA Orange County Building Trades. On behalf of my membership and the 3,000 jobs this will create for construction, we support it.
Thank you, Ron. Next.
Martin Rodriguez, Ironworkers Local 433. We support this project.
Thank you.
Cliff Smith, Business Manager, Roofers and Waterproofers Local 36. We strongly support this project. We need the jobs. Thank you.
Next.
Greg Lewis, UA Local 761. We support the project.
Next.
Adolf Navarro. I've been in the neighborhood since 1959. Everybody's excited. I work for the plumbers union, and we strongly support this project. Thank you.
Next.
Ernesto Pantoja. On behalf of Labor's Local 300, we support this project. Thank you.
David?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. I want to talk for just a minute, not about the project, it's a great one, but about the city. As you know, you and the mayor appointed me to the LA 2020 Commission, and we're concerned about the fact that this city is in desperate need of more resources because we're in the hole, and we gotta get out. We either gotta raise more money or we gotta cut jobs. We'd rather raise more money, and this is a project that will do just that. Bill Clinton said it's all about arithmetic, and that's what we're talking about today, folks. Arithmetic. We need this project because we need the tax revenues it's gonna produce, and I wish there were 10 more projects like it in the city.
Thank you.
Okay. Next.
Thank you.
No, because you're timed. You've got 30. What do they have left?
Well, maybe what I could do is put on the record today's editorial from the Daily News that also supports the project. So, if I could do that and put that onto the record. Councilman Zine, I just want to thank you for your leadership on this project, looking for ways to expedite this and try to speed it up so that we can deliver the jobs and the revenues for the city in three years instead of 15 years. And we're gonna do it, and it's your project, and we're gonna get it done for you. And thank you for working with us to make it happen.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Cindy, you're out of time, so the individuals that didn't get a chance to speak, your cards will be registered on the record. Now, I'm looking for the opposition. Opposition, please come forward. Opposition, please come forward. Okay. Let's start the clock. Okay. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Colleen Marmore. I'm a resident of Willen Hills. I'm a former neighborhood council member, and I'm here today on behalf of myself and the Community Rights Foundation of Los Angeles. I was involved in all the public hearings on this Westfield project, and while the project will go forward, and that's not a bad thing, what I'm here project will go forward, and that's not a bad thing, what I'm here today to ask this city council is to not proceed with the recommendation to give away more revenue to Westfield. I say more money because they're already the beneficiary of being located within the business enterprise zone, and I won't get into that detail now. Many of you are familiar with those extras. Today's city agenda for this meeting notes that there's been no community impact statement provided. Yeah, there's been no time. This thing's been only in the air for a week, and only pre-approved neighborhood council members are allowed to file community impact statements. That's the reason why formal public hearings must be scheduled with adequate notice for proper review and analysis with input from the community. I'll quote.
Okay, thank you. Your minute is up, so can I get the next speaker?
Here's a question. John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. We object not so much to the project, but the multimillion-dollar subsidy to the poor little Westfield company that you're voting in. The developers do not need subsidies, and you need to have general public comment at this meeting. Thank you.
Next.
Mr. President, I'm Siegfried Othmer. I need three minutes for my presentation.
You don't have three minutes.
I spent several hours here.
Listen, the whole hearing on this side is five minutes. I will give you one minute starting now. Do not debate me. You're wasting your time.
The project's fine. What's not fine is the tax subsidy back to Westfield. That is not needed. That is a huge environmental impact that should have been part of the public hearing. Since it wasn't part of the public hearing, the public hearing on fundamental approval should be reopened. The $25 million, you heard the items here, the fire department needs more money. You do not have $25 million for the developer. We've just seen a million people in Brazil arguing against billions for a soccer stadium. Now, what we know about all those million people is that they were all soccer fans. How many of your constituents here really want to have the city money go to a shopping center in my neighborhood, Woodland Hills? I will benefit, but the citizens won't. This is a misapplication of city funds.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sacks. Yes, a great job, a great provider of jobs, but again, it's service jobs that are being provided, living wage or living wage jobs, not manufacturing jobs. And the buildings and the construction, will that be occurring in LA so the people that are working, will those people be living in the city of LA so that their tax dollars will be spent in the city of LA? Is there any guarantee on that? No. And again, as the gentleman just mentioned, you just had the fire chief come up saying he's running a deficit. Will this project require more public services? Yes. So if they are running a deficit and you're giving away tax increment money, how will that help the general fund that the city is always running into? It doesn't add up when you give away city funds and you also give away the public's time to speak on these items.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Zine.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, please come to the center. Colleagues and folks that are here, this is a continuation of a long process for the development of the village at Westfield Topanga and Victory Boulevard. We first began discussion with Westfield and the community regarding this development in the Woodland Hills Warner Center area of my district approximately eight years ago. We went through several community meetings, and because of the turn of the economy, when it went sour in 2008, we ultimately changed the initial plans, went back to the drawing board about four years ago. The final product, which was approved by this council and the mayor nearly a year and a half ago, consists of a project that will include 1,287 direct and 293 indirect construction jobs, 1,597 direct and 187 indirect permanent jobs, 36,000 square foot retail Costco, 150-room hotel, 631,000 square feet of office space, retail, and restaurants. All of this being built on more than 30 acres of current underutilized land in the heart of Warner Center. It is vacant land, drawing absolutely no generate, no money for the city of Los Angeles in any type of job opportunity. The total financial investment for this project will be nearly $300 million by the Westfield Corporation. Our office worked hard with the community to push Westfield to make this project a permanent development in all of the San Fernando Valley, a premier development. Final approval project is pedestrian-friendly, 14,000 square feet of community cultural space, bike-friendly, a local job component so that residents of the West San Fernando Valley will be able to directly participate in the job creation associated with this project. Just some of the virtues of the project. Having said all that, we are here today to hear from the CLA regarding independent financial impact study of this project, where we report that there is a financial gap to Westfield of approximately $48 million that needs to be addressed. The proposed development location is not an obliterating area. In fact, it's situated in the middle-class community of Woodland Hills. That doesn't change the fact that today's economy is in danger of not moving forward because of its funding gap. They have a 25-year plan, and the proposal is it will be done in three years. With that, I'd like to hear the city legislative analysts participate in independent study that was done, paid for by Westfield, and came up with those dollars. And I have a number of questions. The question that I want to begin with is the Daily News incorrectly reported the dollar value on this. This is not dollars given to Westfield to build a project. These are dollars that will be generated once a project is completed in a specific timeframe, and that amount not to exceed $25 million. So, Mr. Miller, also the enhancements that the developers have agreed to, scholarships, et cetera, for the community, take it away. Jerry Miller.
Certainly. Yeah, this is all, what we're talking about here is net new money to the city, which is consistent with all of the other projects. The net new money that would be reinvested is less than your 50% policy threshold. Only 42% of the net new money is being reinvested. The city is keeping the other 58%.
So 58% of what's revenue generated, we're going to keep?
Right.
And the only way we get that money is whatever they receive, whatever that project develops, we will get that amount of money into the funds for the city of Los Angeles. So we're not writing them a check. We're not giving them money to build a project.
That's right. This is net new money that wouldn't be generated without the project, and we're keeping more than half of that.
Do we know how much is generated on that property now to the city of Los Angeles?
I'm sorry, I have to go back into the detailed financial analysis of all the different sources, but.
But right now, what's generated? Nothing.
But right now, it's generating very little because it's essentially vacant.
Other than property tax?
Right.
Which is negligible because it's dirt.
Right, doesn't have anything on it, yeah.
And also the aspect of additional components, and we worked with Westfield to bring this down to this $25 million value, the other components that Westfield is now pledging to do for this particular community.
There's substantial, I won't go in detail there. On page three, they're, again, going to accelerate the construction, the infrastructure is going to be LED silver. They're going to provide digital signs for public service announcements within the developments, contribute $100,000 to the local police station scholarship fund, et cetera. It's page three of the report, and it's a robust package.
Scholarship, a half-million-dollar scholarship for the community, et cetera. And how do we then compel them not to spend 25 years, but to get this done, to start this within a year of this council's final approval, and to get this done in three years and not drag it out where they build one and then they wait 20 years to build the next? How do we get this component? We have the jobs, the opportunities, the money coming in.
Zine, you're over your time.
That was my last question.
Okay, sure. What's before you today is the term sheet. The final agreements will come back. They will have a scheduled performance. If they don't meet the scheduled performance, they will be in default of the agreement, and they won't get the money.
They won't be able to hold back any money?
Right.
Okay, but we will then generate.
That was your last question, Mr. Zine.
Well, I'll make that one more. So what will we generate?
You're over, Dennis, Dennis, you're over.
Okay, just, how much are we going to generate for the city?
In that present value, we're keeping what, $36 million?
$36 million. Thank you.
Okay, now, no more speakers on the queue on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, now we're going to move to item 13. I have a card by Mr. Sacks, Arnold Sacks. Mr. Sacks, item 13.
Item 13, yes. Item 13 deals with the city's position to control charter amendments. And actually, although it doesn't sound like much, this is an item that you should really pay attention if you're in the public venue here, because charter amendments are really the last chance you have to change the direction of the city council unless you recall council members. Now, you know that recall occurred with the governor of California a few years ago, and how'd that turn out? But charter amendments allow you to change the direction of the city. And if you're really not too happy, because you hear a lot of things about ordinances which can occur right here in the council, charter amendments are voted items that come up on a ballot. They're the most, they're the, really, the last chance you have to voice an opinion other than a recall for a council member. So it's good that you have the opportunity to maintain control of the charter amendments. But what's even more important is the citizens, it's very tough, but if you don't vote, you can't really have a voice in what's going on. If you keep track of the charter amendments and you feel you need to have a change in how the money is being spent and funds are being allocated and ceremonies are being held, you can consider a charter amendment to the city council, to the city's charter. Without that opportunity, the city council will maintain its control, riding this steamroller over anybody's opportunities.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Laban, we go to you.
Thank you very much.
And it's my understanding, we've agreed on allotted time, if you could state what that is for your speakers.
Yeah, we have five minutes on either side. This is item 21. GLAZ has been a great partner with the city of Los Angeles that have a marketing plan. I'd just like to ask the CAO at the center desk real quick here so the council member knows, we do have a circulated amendment that would be very helpful. I ask you to reject the motion that was put in by Mr. Parks and Ms. Perry and support the CAO's C, which is in here too, as well. Thank you so much. Mr., just real quick.
Good afternoon, CAO. I also invite John Lewis, the director of the zoo, to join me to discuss this MOU. It's his proposal that he's worked with GLAZ. What it provides is a $2 million investment in marketing for the zoo. There's been frustration, I know, by many members of your council, as well as the issues raised by the CLA report, that there hasn't been a marketing plan in the zoo, and the director has made various attempts to put one together. What this, what this does, it allows him to partner with GLAZ, given the $2 million investment that they receive from outside funding from a foundation, to put together a plan that will come before your council that will provide direction on marketing for the future, for the next three years.
And, Mr. CAO, are we privatizing the zoo?
No.
No? Still remain to the public zoo, public employees, et cetera.
That is correct.
Mr. Lewis, any to add to this?
No, but the goal of this MOU was based on a letter to the, to me from the mayor on a variety of things. There were eight different items, one of which was to enhance the relationship with GLAZ, to find ways to eliminate the general fund contribution, and to grow our marketing and PR functions. And that's what this MOU came out of. And as a result, I think we're down to about $200,000 from the general fund from the zoo, from a height of $10 million over the last.
From $10 million to $200,000 from general fund.
For the last, you know, seven or eight years. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. President, as we turn it over to those speaker cards, as you see, there's no better relationship with an association than the Greater Los Angeles Zoo Association. So if you could call for those who oppose to this and then call those who support it, I appreciate it.
Okay, if the opposition would please come forward. Hurry up, Cheryl.
Good afternoon. Cheryl Parisi, the LA City Coalition of Unions. If we have learned one lesson through these last four years of financial crisis is that we need to pay careful and close attention to revenue items. The CLA's report is outstanding in its analysis of potential revenue and the scrutiny that needs to be applied to all revenue sources within the zoo in order to ensure that the zoo can move forward in a vibrant and well-funded way. We encourage full support of the CLA report. Reject this MOU. Comply with your own standards, your own ordinances, and your own rules. Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the city council, Victor Gortler with Coalition of LA City Unions. Put simply, this is, this is about your own fiduciary obligation. How can you go forward with an MOU when you don't know the value of the MOU? Remember that the authority given to the general manager is to enter into other agreements that you likely will never see approve, approve of, or know the value of. That authority, by the way, is only vested in the general manager once you approve a business and marketing plan. Imagine the instability created when you fail to adhere to your own rules and you're taking up on writ of mandate because you've approved an MOU that doesn't comply with your administrative code. That's what you're looking at, because in 2002, 2005, and 2009, the auditor, the auditor, the auditor controller's audit said there was no marketing plan three times over the course of at least seven to eight years. Also, look at page nine of the MOU that makes invalid the city's general contract provisions.
Thank you, Victor. Next.
Ron Miller with the Building Trades. Please just follow the CLA's report and do, do your due diligence. Thank you.
Jase.
Jason Elias, SCIU 721. Just to echo what my colleagues are saying, this is not a labor issue. This is about doing what's best for the city. And what's best for the city is to follow the administrative code, to get the best deal, to look for efficiencies in government. We want GLAZ to succeed. We want the zoo department to succeed. We need to have a stronger program at the zoo, and that includes a marketing and business plan, which has not been done. We cannot, we know this is not privatizing the zoo. This is a true partnership, but we only have true partnership when we have open government as well as an open partner. And what we're asking you to do is to reject this, this agreement today, do your due diligence, and make sure you get the best deal, not for the unions, but for the city of Los Angeles, because that's what we care about. Thank you.
Next.
Yes, my name is Carmen Hayes Walker. Ask me, like, Local 3090. We believe that we need to get the best deal for the city of Los Angeles, and I believe that partners are supposed to know what each other are doing. And both, both sides don't seem to know what one side and the other is doing. And to be clear, and what all the money that is going to be earned through this, through this deal is going to be best for the city of Los Angeles. So we believe that you should, you should take the CLA's report. Thank you.
Thanks. Next.
Ditto.
Next. Are there any other speakers? Okay, thank you. Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much. Oh, was there?
Proponent want to speak as well? Yeah, was those who, those who were opposed?
No, wait, no, that time is over, Laban. You're here in support, correct, Rich, or no?
I had an opportunity to speak, nor have the 20 people that have come out to speak in support of the MOU.
I gave, the hearing was for five minutes on each side, so, no.
Well, there was five on the, those who were opposed to it, and that should be five on those who are for.
Okay, so go ahead, Rich.
Mr. President.
And could you have your other people get behind you so we take advantage?
I'm going to make this real simple, Mr. President. Rich Lichtenstein, president of the Greater Los Angeles Zoo Association Board. I would just ask the folks that have come out to support the MOU to stand, please. They will, they will all waive their time, and we support the amended motion as proposed by Councilman Laban and Councilman Krikorian. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank all of you for coming. All right, Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could just ask the CAO and the zoo director to come back up for a moment, please. If I could just ask the CIO and the zoo director to come back up for a moment, please. There has been, and, an amendment that Mr. Labange and I have submitted. I want to just have a couple of clarifications, because, as you know, one of the concerns that I had expressed in committee was the exact concern that was expressed just now by the speakers in opposition, that being the authority to enter into the MOU prior to a business and marketing plan being in place. And I want to make sure that we're clear, and that it's clear on the record, that this MOU will have, will be null and void, and have no effect whatever, if a business and marketing plan is not approved by this council prior to December 31st. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And there will be no contractual obligations or liabilities that the city will be exposed to, even if GLAZA enters into third-party contracts during that interim period between now and December 31st. The city will not be held liable for any contractual obligation prior to, to that point. Is that correct?
That is my understand, but I would defer to the city attorney for a more specific response.
Pete Echeverria from the city attorney's office. Since this is very clearly stated and a condition of the MOU, any such contract would be entered into with knowledge of that, of this limitation, so the answer is yes.
So any risk that would be borne relating to any contractual obligations would be borne by GLAZA and not by the zoo department?
Correct.
All right. And then, in addition to that, Mr. Echeverria, attached to the MOU will be the standard city contractual terms relating to, for example, termination for city conveniences, all of those standard contractual provisions. Okay. Now, I just, this is the strategic business and marketing plan from about 10 or so years ago. This is a voluminous and detailed strategic plan. This is what, this is the sort of thing that I will expect to be before the Budget and Finance Committee prior to October 1st, so that all of the concerns that were expressed here regarding anticipated revenues, the legitimacy of projections of what those revenues are, what the appropriate baseline of revenues for purposes of the MOU is, all of those sorts of things, I think, can really only be answered with a detailed strategic and marketing plan, like the one that was entered into previously by the zoo. I know that GLAZA anticipates working with the zoo and developing that, that's anticipated by the MOU. I will certainly welcome that. But, but in anticipation of this, and with knowledge that the MOU will be of no effect without this, I'm prepared to, to move forward with the amending motion that Mr. Labange has submitted.
Mr. Coretts.
I, I still feel queasy about having this go forward without a business plan. I understand that if we don't approve it, the MOU is still functional until a date, I believe, in October, by which they either need to have the business plan, or the MOU would, would be automatically overturned. I think that's appropriate, because I think they need a business plan. So I'm not supporting this unless I can understand why I would do otherwise, but I think that's really a necessity. So I'm gonna vote no.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. Must be the last day of council, I'm gonna agree with Mr. Coretts. But the, I, I think it is important that we follow our own rules, and that we require, by the administrative code, to have a marketing plan, and I think we've asked for it for almost a decade, and we've never gotten it. And so the fix that we're in is not created by the council, is, the fix was created by the department not following the rules, and I think they've been asked a variety of times. The one major concern I have is although you've talked about the issue of the contractual agreements with third parties, what I'm most concerned with are the agreements on the splitting of the revenue internally. Can you alter that after the MOU or the business plan? The fact that we get 100% of the money if we have a fee and a person comes into the zoo, but if it's a membership, I think we get 25%, and the GLAZA gets 25, and there's 50% that's kind of up for grabs, that appears to be spent by GLAZA. So, and, and the fact that GLAZA has not raised the membership fees over time, we're driving people into their program by our increases for six years, in which we get minimal benefit by that. So I need to know, on the internal workings of the split of the city money, is that altered by the plan when it's done?
My understanding is this MOU does not address that, that point at all. It's a separate MOU.
So the thing is, is that if we agree the MOU, the breakdown and the dollars remain, in the sense of what we get from membership and what we get from fees that people pay when they come in.
My understanding of that, of the MOUs that are in place, is that that is a separate MOU, and not, not the one that we're talking about. This is the marketing and...
Okay, but I'm saying, but the part of the marketing, if I understand the MOU, we're talking about $2 million from, from GLAZA year one. About year three is reversed. It's $2 million from the city and about $600,000 from GLAZA, and it's coming from the very fees that we have depended on to keep the zoo out of the general fund.
Let me answer, let me answer the question this way. This specific MOU, the, the funding would, any processes and splits that are put in place, if it were ultimately to be null and void, would be from the beginning of the MOU, so there would have to be an accounting for all those monies from the time that was...
But I'm saying, if we approve it, we're basically approving the fee structure and the split of the internal revenue as is stated.
Correct.
Okay. And the other thing is that, as we go forward with this MOU, it's there for the three-year period. We don't, we can't alter that once the man, the, the business plan comes forward.
Unless it's disapproved, then it would be null and void. Correct.
Okay. Let me just go, one other thing is that the, okay. The issue of the general fund, it appears that if we, in my judgment, and I've only watched this for a couple of years, but it appears to me that if we go down this path of this three-year MOU, at some point in the future, we'll be back to subsidizing the general fund of the department, and it's taken us 10 years to get, get them off of the general fund. It looks like we're headed back in that direction.
What, what this MOU does is provide the department a level of certainty that they haven't had in the last several years. Every year, they've had a struggle because of our fiscal crisis, where they've been forced to reduce program and not be able to hire to the levels that they feel is adequate. What this, what this lays out is a roadmap for the department for the future, and so they could, they could then start planning according to that roadmap. The marketing plan is essential in putting that together, and it's, and the challenge that the department is facing is that it doesn't have the capacity to put the kind of program and marketing plan that, that everyone's expecting them to. So the vehicle to getting to the marketing plan that everyone wants is, in fact, this partnership with GLAZA. So in order for them to achieve a kind of strategic plan for the future, they need the additional resources and partnership that this MOU provides.
I don't disagree with you, and I think that's the right approach to go. I just think the formula that you've used, in my judgment, doesn't benefit the city, particularly, if I read it correctly, we're contemplating increases in fees for the zoo well before the council's approved them.
Well, every year in the budget, the council would have to approve those fees.
I know, but if we don't, this is part of their plan. If we don't approve them, so we're contemplating those fees are gonna be approved for this plan to move forward. And if we don't approve them on a given year, then what happens to the plan, what happens to the MOU? And again, I want to bring you to the tension of the split of the funds. As long as we're raising fees on people coming in the zoo, and the membership fees are benefiting by that change, and we're getting less money, like, three-quarters of the money is going beyond the city. So we're losing membership, we're losing people by them going to the membership, and we're getting very little benefit from the membership fees. So that's why I have a concern. Not that it's not a good theory, not that it's not what we should be doing, it's the makeup of the money and how we're going about it.
And, Mr. Parks, there's a corresponding increase in membership, starting July 1st, from $114 to $119.
I know, but we're six years behind. We've raised it six years in a row, and this is their first year.
No, that's not correct, sir. They've been raising the membership fees for the last several years. And if I can comment on the, the zoo is benefiting from the membership monies that GLAZA is using on our behalf. We have an agreement with them on what those funds will be used for. We are getting a dosit program. We have over 18, 800, rather, excuse me, docents that are trained, at college-level credits, to do tours, educate students, et cetera. We're getting award-winning publications that, that promote the zoo and communicate out to the public with that money. We are getting, the reason, part of the reason, not all the reason, obviously, that people are going to the membership side is because they are doing the marketing and reaching out for that membership program in a way that we cannot. This MOU now allows us to put those two programs together, go forward together, instead of either one cannibalizing the other side, and increase both the general attendance and the membership.
I don't disagree with the philosophy. All I say, if we followed the administrative code, we wouldn't be here today.
In 2009, the zoo did acknowledge how we were utilizing our annual budget, and that was received by the controller, that was received and filed by this council.
But our budget is not a plan. It's a pending plan the city gives you. It's not what we're asking for in the code.
Okay, I hear you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote.
Mr. President, there are two motions have been circulated, 21C and 21D. If you so desire, council should vote on the motion separately, beginning with motion 21D.
Okay, but let me go to Mr. Parks.
One correction on our motion oversight is under two, under the middle of the page, under two, B should be struck, because I didn't read that first sentence. It said, "We're instructing the zoo to continue conducting the marketing," which is inconsistent with my first paragraph that said it should go to GLAZA for one year.
You have that?
So should we just strike C? I mean, I'm sorry, B, in number two.
Okay, now, do we still vote on 21D first?
Vote no on D.
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, so let's take up the vote on 21D. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Four ayes, six noes.
Then motion fails.
Let's vote on the next motion, Mr. Labange.
Well, yes on C, please.
Okay. On 21, 21, okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Six ayes, four noes.
Then motion fails.
What do you want to do, Mr. Labange?
File. It doesn't matter.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order. Okay, quickly, let's do item 15. Mr. Parks.
Can I get a, just one point of clarification? What does it mean if we receive and file the document? What happens? Does it just, the MOU doesn't get approved?
It, it, it's my understanding it automatically takes effect, correct?
That's what I just like to find out.
That's what happens. Jerry, I'm running out of, you gotta answer it quickly.
I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be very quick. No action, the MOU goes into effect, but it would be null and void if the business plan is not submitted.
Thank you.
Okay. So without objection, we will receive and file it. Okay, now, let's do item 15 real quick. Madam Clerk, John, but see, John Walsh is out of time, so we can vote on item 15. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, and I want to continue all the other items that are on the agenda till Tuesday, July 23rd.
Mr. President, just for the record, those items are items 1B, 9, and 12, and 18.
Mr. Reyes.
We have a special two, is that possible?
Yeah, we do it right now.
Thank you. Okay, on a special two...
Ed, you gotta hurry up.
Okay, it's, the findings are that CCNP is a family source center for the city, serving regionally the area of Pico Union, Westlake, funded through the plan from last Tuesday, June 25th. The city has just become aware that CCNP has been hindered in funding awards due to that they do not have site control. CCNP has submitted an application for which they're being reviewed in July, and CCNP is additionally submitting an application in July. The concern, once again, has been CCNP has been disqualified due to CCNP not having any site control. Additionally, the city has just become aware that CCNP has 95 children. The subject site has no air conditioning, with present a public health issue. This concern is magnified the fact that the approval cannot be done due to lack of a lease agreement.
Okay, let's, we vote on the findings first. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, now, let's vote on the actual issue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, I'm gonna try to get through... Okay, what's before the, the committee, Madam Clerk?
A general public comment, Mr. President.
Forthwith, please.
Why, why don't we post and refer all the, the other motions, and then I'll go to general public comment? Can I do that?
Yes, Mr. President.
I want them posted and referred. Did you say forthwith, Mr. Reyes?
Please.
Okay, we're gonna go to a public comment, one minute per speaker. Chuck Tinnan, Donna Peerman, Kathy Knight, I believe it is, John Walsh, Arnold Sacks, please come forward when I call your name. Come on, we're, yeah, a minute each. Come on, Donna, come on, Donna, Donna, come on. Or you're gonna lose your right to speak.
Anyway, I don't think Mr. Westphal should get favoritism. It's not right. It's not right for the City of Los Angeles, not right for employees to serve. It should be stopped. Anyway, um, let's see. Okay, anyway, if, uh, let's see, okay, no, no. I will always remember, in Venice, my district, as, as a cancer survivor of stage one, I wanted to, I came to say goodbye to Bill Rosendahl, one of the best councilmen, he elect, great, 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 one of the nicest, and it will be a big loss to the city council. Marion Fulger wanted to be here and could have, but Van Nuys video conferencing was open. She, she could have spoken, saw it in Van Nuys with me. She's seen her daughter and did not have two hours to get here. I wish you could have reopened our site, uh, to be, to be the voice of the disabled in the valley. Other than, we love you, we'll miss you, and, anyway...
Thank you, thank you, I don't see Chuck. Is there Kathy Knight, John Walsh, Arnold Sacks, Daniel Jones? Go on, Mr. Sacks, I mean, Mr. Walsh.
My exhaustion of administrative remedies, there is no one sitting at the council. This meeting has been adjourned, there is no public meeting, you cannot hold public, you cannot hold public comment unless you have a quorum. I would like to say that I was going to give a cake, this is our cake, and this is your goodbye cake. It says goodbye on it. The five cherries represent the five city council people who are leaving, you can find this on the website if you can't see it. And the chili pepper represents the mayor of the City of Los Angeles for the next few hours. I'd like to point out, our mayor was in Belize, our mayor-elect, and he disappeared. There is no quorum here. The only ones I can see are Parks and Coretts. They're by their chairs. I will make, I see Alarcon, that's three, I see Zine.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, thank you. Okay, Kathy Knight, Arnold Sacks, Daniel Jones, Jones, you're right, well, come on, Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. You know, for some reason, it's called public service. You're elected for public service. You spent, oh, there was an article, somebody made a complaint about the cost for the mayor's inauguration. You spent 10 hours the last couple of weeks running through this dog and pony show to congratulate the council people that are leaving. One minute for public comment. You had people come here for community developments that will impact their lives for the next 20, 30 years. Five minutes here, 10 minutes there. My suggestion is, create a presentation for all these things, and you could talk forever, because one hour for presentations, and George Will once said, "The more they talked of their honor, the faster I counted my silverware."
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Jones. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones, and Candido Moraz, Nelson Castillo. Go on, Mr. Jones.
Good afternoon. My name is Daniel Jones. First of all, I'd like to say, with all due sincerity, that the council members that are not gonna be back, I do truly appreciate your service. You had tenacity to look me in the face, and I respect that. It's never been personal, and I hope you have a good fortunes and good lives and good luck. I really do mean that. Mr. Reyes, it was a pleasure to be at his L.A. River meeting yesterday. I hope any direction towards the L.A. River project, and the commitment from that man I saw was very honorable. Thank you very much. This is the United States Federal Constitution. House Document 110-50 printed in the revised revision of the Constitution of the United States of America as amended is hereby ordered pursuant to House Congressional Resolution 190 as passed on July 25, 2007. My point being is that the mayor-elect cannot in any search, in any way, form be mayor. Article 14, Section 3. He is disbarred and disqualified.
Michael Gonzalez, and if I come identify yourself, sir?
Good afternoon. My name is Nelson Castillo. I am the president of the Westlake South Neighborhood Council. We represent the interest of over 30,000 individuals, together with our honorable Ed Reyes. I was hoping to have two minutes of your time today, but I see that I won't, so I'll just limit my remarks to the following. I would like to thank the Councilman Ed Reyes for his invaluable service to our community, to the members of the District Council One. I would like to thank him especially for all the work, the valuable work is done in the Westlake South area. We deeply appreciate your efforts, sir, and the great efforts of your staff. We thank you. We wish you all the best, and I look forward to come back, hopefully on Tuesday, that hopefully you'll give me two minutes so that I can address a very important issue related to immigration, given that comprehensive immigration reform just passed. Again, thank you very much, Councilman Ed Reyes. God bless you, sir, and thank you all the members of this council for all the great work that you do. Thank you very much.
Okay, Maria Hanscom. Okay, was it there? Is Gonzalez here? Michael Gonzalez? Okay, general public, is sir. Do you have a card in? Oh, okay. Then general public comment is closed. What business is before this council?
The desk is clear, Mr. President, and now it would be adjourned in motions.
Could everybody please rise? Yes, Mr. Parks.
One announcement. Sharon So is celebrating her 31st wedding anniversary.
Well, congratulations. Congratulations. Okay, now, announcements, adjourned in motions. I see none on the right, none on my left. This, Mr. Reyes?
It's an announcement, and I'm not sure if Councilman Coretts, maybe you already covered this, but I wanted to salute the Bruins for their championship in baseball. And were you able to cover that? Okay, I want to make sure we declare it. This is 109 championships for this university, and so, go Bruins, baseball champs. It really happened.
Thank you. All right, this meeting is adjourned.